This is to inform the general public that this meeting is being held in compliance with Section 5 of the Open Public Meetings Act, Chapter 231, Public Law, 1975. The annual notice was emailed to the Star Ledger and filed in the Township Clerk's Office on November 30th, 2020, and published in the West Orange Chronicle on December 10th, 2020. Councilwoman Castellino?
Present.
Councilwoman McCartney?
Present.
Councilman Rutherford?
Present.
Councilwoman Williams?
Present.
Council President Mathieu Brown?
Present. Thank you very much, Madam Clerk, and thank you, everyone, for joining us on our council meeting of July 13th, 2021. We are in our consent agenda, and in this portion, we do have a congressional update by our Congressman Donald P. I don't believe he has joined us yet, so I am going to open the floor at this time and introduce a young man from our community who is the Executive Director of the Young Dems in West Orange, Baharam Matru, who's been working to and has had meetings with the Chief of Police to discuss the status and of the Civilian Review Board as they have advocated for here in West Orange. So because they have had discussions and the chief has updated the council or the mayor, I certainly wanted to provide the opportunity for Baharam to come on and share with the council so that when we are presented with an ordinance, that we have a better understanding of the why and the purpose. So, welcome, Baharam. Thank you for joining us. Please feel free to introduce yourself as well.
Thank you. As Council President Mathieu Brown said, I am Baharam Matru. I am the Executive Director of West Orange Young Dems, and I do a lot of stuff within the town. And I'm here to talk about an ordinance of the Civilian Review Board. Do you mind if I share my screen?
Deb, can you let him share the screen, please? I'm so sorry. Thank you. Are you able to do that now, Baharam?
Yes, thank you.
Thank you.
Let me just reload the page real quick. Sorry about that.
That's okay.
All right, perfect. So, a civilian review board, an integral piece to a federal West Orange. So, to first understand the importance of a civilian review board, we have to look at the data on the national level. So, on average, 1,000 civilians are killed by law enforcement each year. This is taken from the Washington Post, and this is taken from an average of each year since 2015. And following that trend, since January, the start of this year, there have been 469 police shootings. That means, on average, there has been 2.5 police shootings each year. I mean, each day. And as you can see, following the graph, we're well on our way to reach 1,000, and that is a large issue. In 2020 alone, there were 1,021 police shootings. Now, mind you, this is a time where majority of us were within our homes, where we weren't having any interaction with anybody that we knew, much less police officers. So, the fact that 1,021, there were 1,021 police shootings in 2020, a year where we were, majority of us were in our homes, where majority of us had little interaction with the public, that is very alarming. In 2020 alone, there were only 14 days where there wasn't a police shooting. Now, it gets worse when you actually look about how minority populations are affected by this. So, in a study conducted by the Proceedings of the National Academy of Sciences, it was found that black citizens, Latinx, and American natives/Alaskan natives are more likely to die to police compared to their white counterparts. On average, black citizens are 2.5 times more likely, and Latinx citizens are 0.5 times more likely to be shot and killed by an officer. As you can see, there's a huge disproportionate rate of the killings of minorities, specifically black minorities, compared to the majority, which is the white population. Minorities are 2.5 times more likely to be killed. As you can see, there's a huge spike compared to the average rate at which the white population is killed compared to the black population. This is a huge issue that's been permeating through this nation since the founding of this nation, and it's an issue that we need to address. Now, that leads us to the question, how do we address this issue? The answer is the CCRB. So, first off, what will a CCRB do? It'll first investigate. The main point of a CCRB, Civilian Complaint Review Board, is to investigate complaints against officers who violate the rights of citizens or practice any sort of misconduct. This can, for example, be excessive force, harassment, demeaning language, abusive language, so say racial slurs, attacking somebody because, like escalating the situation to something that shouldn't have been. Two, it'll build trust. Through a CCRB, community members will feel more at ease around officers. Through these investigations, we'll be able to find officers who are, who have inherent biases against certain populations, who have a track record of violating their duty to protect and serve, who use their, who use their position to attack instead of protect. So, this will build trust within the community because we understand that the officers that we have within the department are the best of the best, that we don't have any bad officers. And finally, it'll empower the public. Prior, many times, I've talked to many people about this, a lot of citizens didn't feel like they had any power to address if they were violated by an officer, if they were harassed by an officer, because they had no ability to go up to an officer and say, "You did wrong to me. I want justice." Sentences will be able to address officers who violate proper conduct and ensure that justice prevails. Now, when it comes to a CCRB, we have to be very specific about what we need in a CCRB. For one, we need equal representation, representation of the whole as a community. For, so such as East Orange, I believe, they had a CCRB which had appointees from the NAACP and multiple other organizations, ACLU, pretty much organizations that appoint people who look for an equal unbiased view of an officer's actions. And while I say equal representation, I also mean officers as well. It's customary that a CCRB has someone such as the police chief on the board. This provides equal defense for the officer who's being accused of misconduct, and this also provides a clear, a more clear detail and more understanding from both sides of civilians and officers. Two, recommendation of disciplinary actions. So, as a CCRB, it is an investigative entity. It is not a means to punish officers or direct disciplinary actions. These will only be recommendations for disciplinary actions. The municipality or whatever governmental body does take it upon themselves to carry out these disciplinary actions will be in charge of that. What the CCRB will do is recommend a specific disciplinary action that fits the actions of the officer. Point number three, majority civilian appointees. So, to ensure that there is not any unfair bias towards an officer, the CCRB should be comprised of majority civilians. When I say unfair bias, I mean in the sense that benefit of the doubt or anything of that sense. Civilians, officers, they'll be able to kind of take their own, their own experiences and put it into the situation, while we take civilian, civilian experiences and put that into the situation. This will put it into perspective of both sides so as to understand, as to come together to a proper, into a proper action. Members of the public, these appointees will be members of the public who have little to no interaction with officers in their professional lives. And finally, point number four, subpoena power. This is possibly the most important point of a CCRB that we need. A civilian complaint review board needs subpoena power in order to function as an entity. A civilian complaint review board without the ability to subpoena will only be a symbolic gesture and not a true vehicle for change. We do not need a civilian review board that is a civilian review board in name only. Without subpoena power, the civilian review board can't work. It's an investigated body, and without subpoena power, it can't investigate. Thus, that's why we need a subpoena board with subpoena power so it can investigate. Now, finally, to my last side, to emphasize the importance of a CCRB, I bring you to these three men. I believe that we've all seen them on the news, in newspapers, The Times, Huffington Post, whatever. In the case of Casey Goodson Jr., he was shot and killed by ex-deputy sheriff Jason Mead. Casey Goodson Jr. was entering his home. His back turned to deputy sheriff, ex-Jason Mead, with a Subway sandwich in his hand so that he could feed his younger siblings. Deputy Sheriff Jason Mead took this as a gun, a sandwich that we all know of being covered in a white paper with green and yellow font, something that I believe many of us would not mistake for a gun. Ex-deputy Sheriff Jason Mead referred to his job as hunting and was quoted as saying that he loves it, and also referred to the use of force as righteous release. That is a huge issue. It should not, the position of officer should not be viewed as a hunting, a job to hunt people. It should be viewed as a job to protect and serve, which I believe many officers agree with. Next, we have ex-officer Daniel Pantaleo. This officer was the same officer who put Eric Garner in the chokehold as he pleaded for his life and said, "I can't breathe." Prior to the murder of Eric Garner, Pantaleo had 12 complaints made against him by citizens, complaints that went unheard. And again, hearing those fateful words of, "I can't breathe," it brings us to George Floyd, the same words uttered by George Floyd as ex-officer Derek Chauvin put his knee upon George Floyd's neck. Prior to the murder of George Floyd, Chauvin had 18 complaints made against him. This is a large issue. These were all preventable cases. If it was taken upon the municipality of these specific towns, they could have seen that these officers were a risk to the community and to other officers as well. Ex-deputy Sheriff Jason Mead was quoted also to say that if one officer starts hitting, if one officer throws a punch, he's joining in. He considered his time off, his temporary suspension, as a vacation day. He viewed his job, first and foremost, as an excuse to fight. That should not be, that should not be the main thought of an officer. His main thought should be to protect and serve. These were all officers whose main thought was to use their position to hold it against somebody else. And sadly, because of that mentality, these officers took the lives of innocent bystanders, innocent people who didn't do anything wrong to merit death. With that said, I do hope that we can have, we can implement a CCRB within West Orange so that issues such as Derek Chauvin, Daniel Pantaleo, and ex-deputy sheriff Jason Mead do not exist again. Thank you.
Baharam, thank you so much for the work that you and your colleagues have taken, the time you've put forth to researching and meeting with our Chief of Police. I see our chief was on, hi, Chief. He's still here. I'm glad that you're here, Chief, as well, so that, can you provide an update as to where we are? We've had these discussions before, but more recently, can you just give us some more recent updates as to where we are with moving forward?
So, we're gonna need a council ordinance, which I'm gonna work with the legal department and go ahead and run with, because I, there's a lot of restrictions. As Baharam said, you know, the subpoena power, I don't, it's not that I disagree with subpoena power, it's just not legally permissive right now. So, I think, you know, I should work along with the legal department and my staff and I and get what we can do in place, because I, although, you know, there can be a better system down the road when the law permits, I still think, you know, doing something is better than doing nothing. So, you know, if we move in that direction, we can always, you know, consider this a work in progress and get to where we be down the road. There's a, there is some legislation pending that I noticed John McCain was actually one of the co-sponsors that signed on to, that would allow for subpoena power, but I don't know where that is in that bureaucracy down in Trenton right now. So, you know, if that passes, that would enable to, enable CCRB to have subpoena power. You know, I've been in many conversations with the command staff at work, and, you know, they understand that this is what the community wants, and it's far better to be a part of this process than to, you know, to not be a part of it and have it forced on you and, you know, it just, it just makes us look more out of touch. And I don't wanna, I don't wanna give the impression the command staff feels differently than I do. That's not the case, but they understand that, and I, you know, I explain to them that's the message that they have to, you know, filter downward to their people, that, you know, this is important, this is what the community wants, this is what the people in the whole United States, for that matter, seem to want, and, you know, we need to be a part of that, not apart from it.
Thank you, Chief, for all of your work and for, as well, the time that you've given to Baharam to go through this process and make this presentation to our council, and I look forward to the time when we can all be back here again discussing an actual ordinance as we move forward. But Baharam, thank you so much for joining us, and certainly will keep you posted as we progress in this space with next steps. But appreciate your participation, love that you're doing it locally, maybe your name will be on a ballot someday, and you'll be someday on the side of the dais, while we're, while we're on vacation somewhere. But thank you so much for your commitment to this community. I really appreciate, and I'm sure that my council colleagues do as well. I wanna give Congressman Payne an introduction. Congressman Payne, thank you for joining us as well today. Happy to have you. I know that your last visit unfortunately was canceled because we had to cancel for Election Day, but please, welcome. Thank you for joining us, Congressman Payne.
Thank you, and good evening to the entire council. It's a real honor to be here tonight to talk to you a little bit about things that I'm working on in Washington and, you know, reporting to all of the municipalities in the 10 congressional districts. This is my second, my, my second go-around to each, to each community, and moving forward, I wanna continue this, hopefully on a biannual basis where I could come in and speak to you on issues that pertain to the Congress and get any information that you might need to get to me. So, I really appreciate the, the opportunity tonight. But you know, our, our country is at a crossroads right now. Vaccines against COVID-19 have helped reopen much of our economy and society. Right now, more than half of the country has been vaccinated against this dreaded disease, and if we can get more people vaccinated, we could reach a herd immunity and soon, and hopefully to return to whatever the new normal is gonna be. But there are many Americans who refuse to get vaccinated, and that has allowed variants of COVID-19 to spread and cause more deaths. If it continues, medical experts have said that we might have to return to wearing masks indoors. That's why we need to get more people vaccinated, just plain and simple, so we can save lives and restore our livelihoods. I find it interesting that the people who refused to wear masks from the beginning now refuse to get the vaccine. Now, the vaccine is the best way to get rid of the mask for good. I got vaccinated because I wanted people to know that it was safe. It was an example of my dedication to helping you survive this pandemic and make your lives better. Right now, I'm working every day in Congress to get you the resources that West Orange needs, and it's much easier, believe me, now with President Biden's leadership. Yeah, that goes without saying. When we do reopen completely, we're going to need better roads and bridges, and I took actions last month to help improve both in our district. First, I met with Transportation Secretary Pete Buttigieg to discuss the need for the Gateway Program funding, and at the beginning of the year, I was honored to have the President invite me to the Oval Office as the first Democrat to meet with him after he took office, and so that was quite an honor that your member of Congress was asked to come to the White House before many others. So, hopefully, I'm on the right track here. I helped get the Portel North Bridge several years ago, $900 million in federal funding to get that project going, and now that is broken ground, and I'm proud that it will, you know, break ground this year. And now, now we need to focus on the Hudson River Tunnel. We need funding to build a new tunnel to repair the old ones. Second, I introduced the Invest in America Act, which passed the House a few weeks ago. It provides $715 billion over the next five years to rebuild roads, bridges, and pass in the passenger rail networks nationwide. These are the roads that you use every day to get around West Orange and trains you use to travel throughout the Northeast Corridor. When I spoke to President Biden a few months ago, we discussed the 10,000 bridges that need immediate repair across this nation. So, my Invest Act helps support the infrastructure improvements from President Biden's American Job Plan. It provides $343 billion for road and bridge repair and replacement nationwide, and that funding includes $4 billion for nationwide, a nationwide electric vehicle charging system. Ideally, that system would make the electric vehicle charging as easy as pulling into a gas station today. The bill also included $95 billion for passenger rail, and that funding can be used for the Hudson River Tunnel project. In addition, it includes other benefits for our country's infrastructure. It includes $117 billion to replace lead piping and provide cleaner drinking water for all Americans, and that is a, that is a project that is near and dear to me. You know the issue that we had in Newark, and we were fortunate, we are at about 99% of removal of all lead piping in the water system in Newark, and it's become a model for communities around the country. In fact, I am giving a report to the leadership in the House of Representatives, Ms. Pelosi, Mr. Hoyer, and Mr. Clyburn, and the Chairman of Transportation Infrastructure, Mr. Pete DeFazio, on what we did in Newark. They're, they're very interested on how we were able to accomplish that. You know, lead contaminated water was quite an issue in Newark, and I don't want it to become an issue for any other community in our district or country. So, the bill includes $109 billion to modernize our nation's infrastructure. Some of this funding would put more, would put more lower and zero emission buses on the road to clean the environment, and I was able to work with the Department of Transportation and New Jersey Transit, just won an award to get several of these low emission electric buses to do a test run with them, about $5 million. So, I was very happy to have helped them with that. It also provides $51 billion to improve our country's water, wastewater management system. We need this upgrade to protect lakes and rivers from wastewater overflow. The ability to introduce the Invest Act is one of the reasons I wanted to become Chairman of the Railroad Subcommittee. I wanted to make sure our rail projects, like the Gateway Project, had a strong advocate in Congress. That's why I made sure to include funding for the Gateway Program in this bill. But that is not the only way that I am supporting you. A few months ago, we passed the American Rescue Plan. $1.9 trillion stimulus package helps Americans and local governments deal with the coronavirus directly. The new package benefits West Orange residents in several ways. It provided the $1,400 to help lower-middle income Americans pay some of their bills during the crisis, and included an additional $300 in unemployment benefits to jobless Americans until this September. It includes almost $38 billion to help Americans pay for rent and mortgages, and I know that's something that has been quite a concern in a lot of communities, and it stops evictions and foreclosures until October of this year. It adds almost $8 billion to popular, the Popular Payroll Protection Program, so small businesses can keep employees on the payroll, and then increases, it creates a new $25 billion restaurant revitalization fund. Now, this is something interesting. This is money that can go directly to restaurants to get back on their feet, and I think it's something that we need to take, need to make sure that our restaurants and small businesses in our community know about these dollars. It would encourage you to promote this funding with your local restaurants. So, we had lost many of them, you know, during the pandemic. In addition, the plan, which I'm very excited about, and I've been like Johnny Appleseed running all over the district, touting this program, the child tax credit helps to keep millions of children fed and out of poverty, and not only children that are under poverty, under the poverty line, but middle-income families, families that are like in West Orange. So, it provides $250 to $300 per month to families with children under 17 years old. So, if you have four children under, under 17, that's $3,000 a year, times four is $12,000. So, you know, this, this can add up. This can be substantial, and I've just been making sure to everyone that has the opportunity to go into this program to try to make sure that they know, they know about this. These payments start July 15th until the end of the year, but we need, we need to notify the IRS so you can qualify for them. I've been busy really promoting it, as I stated, in events throughout the district, and I wanna make sure families get the assistance they need to survive this pandemic. Thankfully, West Orange will get direct help from the American Rescue Plan as well. The plan provides $350 billion in Bailey Needa Eight to states and cities, and that was something that the New Jersey delegation fought very hard for, and I was actually in the leadership of that, because the initial program was only gonna be for communities of 500,000 or more. Well, here in New Jersey, our largest city is 300, 300,000 people, so we wouldn't qualify. So, myself and Lacy Clay from Missouri, who had the same problem with St. Louis, we went to Ms. Pelosi and said, "Well, you might as well shut, you know, Missouri and New Jersey down because we won't qualify." And they recalculated it, and everybody, everybody received money. I fought to get West Orange almost $5 million from that fund, so I'm very proud of that. In addition, the plan establishes programs to vaccinate every American and reopen every school. It uses $20 billion to increase vaccine production. So, you know, I don't wanna put you to sleep, but, you know, I just need to try to make sure that you understand that I'm working very hard in Washington to get you the dollars that you need for your community, and, you know, just wanted... And, you know, just wanted to come on and give you an update with reference to what we have been doing and what the American Rescue Plan and the American Jobs Plan really mean to people in, in, in real, in real time. And please don't forget about that child income tax credit. If you're a single family of, and you make seventy-five thousand dollars or less, you qualify. A family of two, two parents in the home, it's a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. So that takes in a lot of, a lot of families in West Orange. So this is, this is something that is there, that you should make sure your residents understand and, and, and help put their tax dollars back in their pockets. And that's what this is about. This is money you send to the federal government. And you should, in some way, be compensated and get a return on your investment. You invest in this nation. And there should be a return on it. So, you know, I wrote a letter to the Department of Health and Human Services to designate teachers as frontline workers. And after my letter, President Biden made teachers' vaccines a high priority. And I wrote a letter to President Biden once again to implement my Mask for Students Act. This bill allowed the federal government to reimburse schools for protective equipment and expenses. So make sure you understand that as well. And hopefully your Board of Education knows about this. It's called the Mask for Students Act. And any mask or, or equipment that you've used for teachers or students, you can get reimbursed from the federal government. And that was my, one of my bills that got passed. So I don't want to bore you, but my website, my website has a page dedicated to helping you apply for the benefits from our aid packages. So please visit pain.house.gov. And I believe my staff will put it in the chat. You know, it contains links to help you with the stimulus funds as well as PPP, clarity on the PPP guidelines. It also has information about how to get the expanded child tax credit. I'm really excited about that child tax credit. My children too old, and I make too much money. But I could have used that for my trip. I have, I had triplets. And, yeah, I know. And it's, I'm, I'm almost all, I'm, but I thank God I made it through and they're doing well. But if you need help, you can contact my office at nine seven three six four five three two one three. And I just want to thank my staff because they've been on the job since the pandemic started. We were closed one day, one day. And my staff went back to work and they've been on the job ever since. So I just want to thank them for their dedication to the 10th District. And we wouldn't been, wouldn't, wouldn't have been able to do it without them. My office never closed during the entire pandemic. And let me know if you have any questions or how I can help in the future. Sorry for such a long but, you know, I really need, I really, you know, need to get people to understand, you know, what I'm working on and how hard I'm working. I, I, I'm, people say that one of my problems is I don't talk about what I do and they don't see, you know, big press conferences and all of that. Well, I, I don't do a lot of that. I try to touch people where they are and help them with what they need. And hopefully they feel good about the work that I've done and help me continue in that vein. So I just want to thank you. I was in West Orange for Juneteenth. And also I spent a couple hours with Councilwoman McCarthy at the Thomas Edison Museum. And we're working on ways where I could try to find some money to do the upgrades that they want to do there. So it was really special to my father. He actually fought when they redistricted last time, about ten, twenty years ago, to keep the Edison Museum in his district. And I've been fortunate to have it too. And I'm trying to continue the work that I saw him do. So we're gonna, we're gonna figure it out and see how we can enhance that great piece of history there in West Orange. So with that, I will be quiet and try to answer any questions you might have.
Congressman, thank you so very much for your time. I think that these visits are necessary and it helps us keep pace as well. And as you were talking, you were not boring any one of us. I think we were all talking, taking notes. I saw my colleagues writing down because everything that you mentioned from, you know, when you talked about the, the restaurant revitalization fund, I was thinking about Councilwoman Catalino. You were talking about the PPE. I thought about our Councilwoman McCartney, who's Chamber of Commerce. You're also talking about vaccinations and Councilman Rutherford organized a vaccine drive in his church. There's so much work that we're all here to do. So thank you for sharing that. And I'll let my colleagues speak. Councilwoman Catalino.
I just want to say thank you to the Congressman. You're always such a great advocate for our district. You are always so humble and just, I just always, always a pleasure for you to come and visit us and, and yes, and to inform us because you are humble. You, you aren't out there. I, I kinda, I kinda operate like you as well, where, you know, we, we are so busy working that we don't, you know, we don't let people know exactly what we're always working on. So it's very important. And I know you've been working hard for us and I really appreciate you coming in this evening. And it was great to see you a few weeks ago. Thank you, Congressman.
Councilwoman McCartney.
Yes, good evening. Nice to see you again, Congressman Payne. I'm sorry it was ninety-four degrees on Wednesday when we did meet, but again, it was so educational and informative. And I do look forward to hearing this because I was taking notes and I have a list of things. I appreciate the resources that you're working on for West Orange and for the entire district. I do appreciate that. I want to say though, what you said that we don't know this. So unless you come and bring this to our attention. I did just see inside of New Jersey just this morning, I saw the article on Invest in America. And now here you are to talk about it. So, you know, I just like that you're bringing it to the forefront. And I wanted to say, and I appreciate, of course, coming out to the Friends of Thomas Edison National Historic Park on Wednesday because it is historic, is historically designated, historical significance. And we are trying to, friends, that's their job. That's their task, is to try to preserve what they can of this legacy that we have right here on Main Street. So I appreciate anything that you can do for us in that regard. And this year in particular, now that the site just reopened on July second, you know, we are trying to raise funds, raise funds and raise friends for the Black Mariah. So that's where our efforts are concentrating on this year. So I hope to see you before October second because that's when our cocktail party is, but hopefully we'll see you before then.
Well, now, what was the number again? I can't remember offhand. I have it in my office. But how much are we trying to raise for the Black Mariah?
The assessments for the Black Mariah are in the range of about one hundred and fifty thousand to one hundred and sixty-five thousand. It's a lot of money, but considering the billions of dollars that you just talked about, you know, it would just be helpful here.
You know, you know, really with the, you know, this is a very unique opportunity in this country's history at this point in time. For all of you communities to take advantage of what the federal government is doing. And it's, like I said, you pay taxes to the federal government. This is a return. So don't think it's a charity or anything. This is your money. And it's coming back to work for you. So I'm just delighted to be in this position at a time. I've been, this is my, my third president. And it is amazing what President Biden wants to do for this country. And he's going big.
Very ambitious.
Not going to have opportunity like this again. So we need to seize the opportunity and utilize all the dollars, you know, maybe with that five million that I got to you, you can reprogram some of it in another area and then use that money for some for the Black Mariah. But I'm going to, I'm going to look at, I'm going to talk to, as we're sitting here, I think I'm going to talk to County Executive Joe DiVincenzo. You know, Thomas Edison, that, that site is a park. It's not a Essex County park, but it's a park in Essex County. So I think I might be able to finagle him, you know, little, with a little semantics. And I was able, that money where you, where you got the five million, I was able to get the county a hundred and fifty-four million dollars. And so, you know, you know, that's.
You are humble then. You are humble. You said that yourself, but you are humble. But I'll let you know that I did send a press release about your visit on Wednesday. You may not have done it, but I did.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Councilman Rutherford.
Thank you, Council President. Thank you, Congressman Payne. You know, it's already been said, we certainly do appreciate all your hard work and effort. You come from a family that has poured their lives into serving New Jersey, Essex County in particular. So we are grateful for all of those decades of service. I, I want to let you know that I will be reaching out to you. We have some needs with regard to roads and sidewalks in town. Our mayor has already expressed support for that. And so has our county exec. So I, I did take some notes and I certainly will be reaching out to your team to discuss that and see how we may be able to participate with some of the federal funding in order to accomplish some of that. But thank you again on behalf of all of the folks in West Orange for what you've done, especially during COVID. And I do echo your sentiment. We have to get vaccinated. So for those of you that have not, please do. That's the only way we get back to normal. All right. Thank you, Council President.
Thank you, Councilman Rutherford. Councilwoman Williams, are you there?
Yeah. I just want to thank Congressman Donald Payne. It is a privilege for you to grace us with your presence this evening. We are so delighted that you bring all this information to us. And we will look forward to your continued informational sessions. And even more frequently than by annual, we would certainly be pleased to have you visit us. Thank you so much for all the work that you have done. It was a pleasure to sit with you at our Juneteenth event here locally in West Orange. And that was quite a festive day and a privilege for our community to celebrate that wonderful holiday. I will continue to yield to my colleagues sentiments. As unfortunate as it always seems to be, I go last by last name. So they have already expressed all the things that I would also like to concur with. So thank you so much for joining us this evening. We appreciate you.
Thank you so much. My honor.
Thank you, Congressman. And Councilwoman Williams, I might surprise you one of these days. So let's, let's change it up a little bit.
Share to you, with you, one of the things that my aunt used to always say to me was, don't get ready, be ready. So whenever that day arrived, I would be.
Great response. Thank you, Councilwoman. Once again, Congressman, thank you for your time and trust that West Orange will be reaching out to your office to collaborate and, and build community in furtherance of the benefits that we want to see here for our residents. So thank you so much for taking time out of your busy schedule to join us here this evening.
Well, it's, as I stated, it's my honor and duty to be here to inform you on what's happening on Capitol Hill and the efforts that I'm putting forth for you and the other communities in the congressional 10th District. I'm one of four hundred and thirty-five members of the United States House of Representatives. And it is an honor to serve. So that you have the faith in me to send me to Washington to be your voice is, is, is very humbling and overwhelming. And I, believe me, I am trying to do my best to bring the dollars back to the, to this community. And, you know, it's like anything in the Congress, you know, I paid my time, I've done my dues, and now, you know, I'm moving into areas where I can be impactful with resources. And so I'm ready and want to be helpful. So thank you.
Wonderful. Thank you so very much. Council colleagues, I will ask or implore that we be brief with our liaison reports since it is seven fifteen and I know we need to start public portion. So Council, I'm going to start backwards. Councilwoman Williams. She that?
Right. Thank you so very much. So as far as council liaison reports, so happy to announce that the Rent Leveling Board will now be meeting on a monthly basis. And that schedule is posted on our township website. We are also working to make sure we have some forms for our residents to complete when they do have some, some concerns that need to be addressed by the board. In addition, we will have two meetings this month for our Historic Preservation Commission. Those two are indicated on the township calendar. And happy to also put out there that we have saved the date for the second annual run for ZAC. That's going to be held on October third at Rock Spring Golf Club. Thank you, Council President, for this time and opportunity.
You're very welcome. Councilman Rutherford, please.
Thank you. I, I wanted to just address something that Barum Meritu from the West Orange Young Dims presented in his presentation. So first, let me just say thank you, Barum, for all the work you've done. He and I have, have had many, many conversations about this issue. He is clearly passionate and so is his team. And it shows in the work that they've done. I just wanted to ask the chief as a follow-up. I, I know that the city of Newark, their, the subpoena power that they're trying to give their civilian review board is before the Supreme Court, or I think it's before the Supreme Court, and you may be able to enlighten me. But my question is, if we all agree to give the civilian review board subpoena power, meaning the council, the mayor, the chief of police, if we all get on the same page with regard to subpoena power, what, would it still be illegal? Is there something that would keep us from agreeing to vest that power in the civilian review board that I'm not quite aware of? And, and, you know, I'm certainly not the expert on this, on this issue, but I would think that if we all agreed that we could vest the power with the CRB, is that, is that accurate?
It may be.
It matters. Okay, I don't know if you want to answer, but.
Yeah, go ahead, Mr. Kaiser.
I, I think it's a matter of state law. And not, you know, it's not, it's, it will depend on, I, I believe there was consideration given by the state to legislation that would permit subpoena power for these kinds of bodies. But it's a state, it's a state matter, not a local matter.
So the way it's handled now is it is not permitted by state law to have subpoena power with the CRB?
I believe that's the case currently, but I believe it's under discussion. And I believe there may be a bill out to, that would give subpoena power. Whether it's going to pass or not, I can't say, but.
Yeah, yeah, I think our Assemblyman McKeon is one of the leaders on that. So I wasn't clear that it was actually illegal to vest that power. I thought in the case of Newark, it was challenged. And that's what I wanted clarification on. But, but thank you. With regard to council liaison, it's summertime. The calendar is up. Tomorrow night is the Pedestrian Safety Advisory Board meeting. I have two other obligations tomorrow night, so I will not be able to attend, but I, I do hope all of those that wish to attend can. And our calendar is on the westorange.org website. So in the interest of time at seven twenty, I'm just going to turn it back to our Council President. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Rutherford. Councilwoman McCartney.
Thank you. All right. I'll start with the West Orange Arts Council and not list everything. So I'm just going to invite everyone to visit warts.org because there is information there on art, music, performing arts, creative writing programs, so much going on and so much great press going on for the West Orange Arts Council. So I'm very pleased about that. The West Orange Chamber of Commerce is having their first summer social at Ospac on July thirtieth. Everyone is invited to attend. We'll be on the patio. We will have food served by, provided by Bonds and Puris Glee. And the ticket will include the Ospac show that evening, which is a Beach Boy tribute by The Driftwoods. So that is on July thirtieth, starting at five thirty. You just heard about the Friends of Thomas Edison National Historic Park from Congressman Payne. He did come out on Wednesday. And that is because we are trying to raise funds to protect and preserve the Black Mariah. So save the date, October second, for a cocktail. So save the date, October second for a cocktail reception. At the National Historic Site. The um, Bill, I just wanted to say the West Orange Environmental Commission and you know, the Open Space Commission. We worked on a grant together, introduced P B's only last month at the ribbon cutting. This Saturday, part of that grant included an educational component. And because there is, there has been a pollinator garden created by the community. Uh, the Liberty Science, uh Liberty Middle School Science Teacher has been working on creating QR codes. So that it becomes the educational uh information center using QR codes that are on post. That are throughout the pollinator garden. So that is an invitation to attend this Saturday, July seventeen. And the planning board uh did meet last Wednesday and voted unanimously. To recommend to the council the ordinance being uh on the cannabis ordinance, ordinance that's on our agenda. That it is consistent with the township's master plan. Uh, as a permitted use in commercial zones in recognition of market changes for retail and other non-residential uses. Hmm, that's it for, oh, and I'm sorry, the Environmental Commission also is going to meet on July twenty eighth. And we have a presentation from GeoScapes. Because we have been discussing for many years. Uh, the feasibility and the potential use of or the potential, potential installation of. Solar carports at municipal sites that are public schools um uh at town hall. So that should be interesting on July twenty eighth. Uh, a Zoom link will be provided on the township website. And I also wanted to thank the chief and Bron for the information that you provided and just bringing all of that information out to the forefront. Just like Congressman Payne, bringing everything to our attention. So thank you very much. I look forward to hearing more information about that. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman McCartney. Councilwoman William, I'm sorry, just used to do, doing that last. Councilwoman Castelino.
Thank you, Council President. Jada, thank you to Bron and uh the chief for bringing us that information. And it's always just so impressive to see our former students from the high school. Um, come here and uh just always, you know, always just knock it out of the park. So thank you. For that hard work and again, thank you Congressman. Um, you know, I just want to recognize Recreation Department. Uh, as usual, they've been outstanding throughout the summer. We had a great fireworks uh this year, uh food truck festival, sports and games night. Uh, there's a pickleball starting for residents tomorrow. So if you haven't signed up, please give them a call. It's every Wednesday from nine to ten AM at O'Connor Park. Um, the community band that the Recreation Department help uh had put together with uh some of our residents. Uh, they will be performing Tuesday, July seventh at Clipper Pavilion, uh South Mountain Reservation at seven PM. Um, and and then uh Councilwoman McCartney mentioned the beach uh party that's sponsored by the rec as well, so. Now them too has worked all through the pandemic. They haven't skipped a beat, providing whatever they could for our residents and it's just been so great. Uh, Edwin Johnson, Candy Myrick, just, just outstanding work, the whole, the whole department along with Public Works. Helping them and helping us at Downtown Thursday nights as well. Uh, our downtown committee has been having great successes except for the rain last week. Uh, so we can't seem to get our Downtown Thursday in by our restaurants uh at Eagle Rock. Uh, with live music and the food tour uh got rained out twice, but we will make them up in August. Tomorrow night, uh, we are at Torrey Corner, uh this Thursday night rather, we are Torrey Corner between five and eight. For a chocolate tour, visit all the eateries down there for chocolate treats. Uh, games and music. So it's, it's just been great events uh next week. If you haven't been by the um. Uh, down by Saint Mark's Church there by Benji's and uh Supreme Bakery area on the uh. There we had an ice sculpture that will be back. Just wonderful, wonder event. So we just want to thank all those Megan Brill and her committees for working really hard. Uh, with that as well, uh, will we have more information, uh Council President, hopefully by next meeting to have a presentation about the. The uh, uh, mobile app. Um, we're still uploading all that information. We've been working on uh multiple grants and uh our new marketing vendor had gotten um because of. Of a, a press release they did uh when the museum opened up for July second. Uh, from the press release, um PBS came out to do New Jersey Spotlight on them. So um, we're seeing some great recognitions, uh very exciting. And also I have to give kudos to Sergeant um Diaz, our school resource officer. Had put together this year's Junior Police Academy, which I think is uh worth mentioning. Um, you know, they always do a standing job. The attendance was, was great this year and um. It's great to see those community policing activities that we're so proud. To do here in West Orange to just bring our community together uh with our police department. So thank you, Council President, and uh look forward to enjoying all the rest of the events uh throughout August.
Thank you so much. Um, and in consideration of time, I will update my um social media with my um. With my updates. So we can move on to the public portion. Of the meeting and um just want to remind the public, I did do a public posting. That we do have a substitute moderator this evening. Our moderator Lauren is on vacation, a well-deserved vac- vacation and. Will update and upload this video and share it on the channel thirty-six upon her return. On or about the twenty-first um of, of this month. So. It will not be up on Thursday as is typical, but it will be up as soon as she is back from vacation. Uh, Madam Clerk.
This is to inform the general public that this meeting is being held in compliance with Section Five of the Open Public Meetings Act, Chapter Two Thirty-One, Public Law nineteen seventy-five. The annual notice was emailed to the Star Ledger and filed in the Township Clerk's Office on November thirtieth, twenty twenty. And published in the West Orange Chronicle on December tenth, twenty twenty. Councilwoman Castelino.
Present.
Councilwoman McCartney.
Present.
Councilman Rutherford.
Here.
Councilwoman Williams.
Present.
Council President Matute Brown.
Present.
Will everyone please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. The council is now in their public meeting.
Thank you, Madam Clerk, and to the public, those who would like to speak, you will be provided five minutes to provide your public comments. Um, just raise your um Zoom hand. And for those, Deb, can you give us the instructions for those who are calling in how to participate?
Yes, it's star nine um to raise your hand. Um, I believe star nine or star six. I'm drawing a blank. Star nine, I think to, to raise the hand and then star six to unmute. Otherwise, it's the opposite way and I apologize. Um, normally the directions are at the bottom of the. Of the screen. Um, but if you do need to, to, we'll work through it. I'm not, and I am currently seeing somebody with their phone, so I will double check that before I get to you to confer. That's how it is.
Certainly appreciate that. Um, did want to make note though that there, the time, the timer is wrong.
Yeah, it is. Okay, there we go. It is. I don't know why it showed four minutes. I'm like, I thought it was the right one.
Excuse me, I'm the date.
Ah, I changed it on almost every slide. I, I will fix that and it'll be correct in the, the final video. I thought I got all of them.
Thanks, Dan.
Thank you, Councilwoman McCartney, for that catch.
This is why we need Lauren.
She's gonna do it.
You're doing.
Joe Fagan, you should be able to unmute yourself and. Um, state your name and address and your comment.
Thank you, Madam Moderator, and a good evening to you, Madam President, and your council colleagues and all members of the administration. I am, of course, Joe Fagan, the Public Information Officer, and thank you for the opportunity to briefly address the West Orange public this evening. Tonight, I only have a few brief items of interest I would like to bring to our residents' attention. We are only ten days out from the opening of the Summer Olympics in Tokyo, Japan. They were originally scheduled to take place last August, but like so many other events were postponed due to the worldwide pandemic. This will mark the second time that Tokyo has hosted the Summer Olympics. The first time was in nineteen sixty-four when a seventeen-year-old West Orange high school student fulfilled her dreams of Olympic gold. I am, of course, talking about former West Orange resident Jenny Dunkle, for whom the town pool is named. She won both a bronze and a gold medal in Tokyo in nineteen sixty-four. She now lives in Missouri and I spoke to her earlier this week and she sends her warm greetings to West Orange. Which she says will always, she will always consider her hometown. I had a very nice conversation with Jenny and she told me that competing in the Olympics completely changed her entire life. And set her on a path she would never have traveled. She wanted me to tell you that she looks at the current Tokyo Olympians and hopes they will have the same life, alter and experience she had. Unfortunately, COVID nineteen issues will take their, will make their experience difference. But this takes nothing away from their accomplishments. Jenny stressed. That she wanted everyone to know that they are still world-class athletes and will always be Olympians. Tomorrow will be the official dedication for a historical marker in the Valley section of West Orange. This is the latest of a series of roadside markers sponsored by the Downtown West Orange Alliance. There will be a brief ceremony at five o'clock on the corner of Valley Road and Hazel Avenue, and the public is invited to attend. This commemorates the Orange Valley toboggan slide of the late nineteenth century, once used for winter recreation by local residents. This marker was made possible by a donation from the former Valley Community Watch Group. And some of their former members will be in attendance. Finally, I would just like to bring to a residence' attention about what may seem like an innocent engagement in fun on social media. Specifically, in one of the West Orange Facebook groups recently, there was a question circulating by an unknown company. Asking if anyone remembered the name of their fifth grade teacher. Questions like this seem to strike a nostalgic chord with people and dozens of people were quick to respond, proud that they remembered. What they aren't aware of is that this might unknowing, they might unknowingly be giving away information that is sometimes used as security questions. In the retrieval of forgotten passwords. There is no way of knowing if this type of highly personal and seemingly innocent information. Is potentially being stored in a database by hackers to later use for identity theft. Other similar questions might ask you the name of your first pet or the town you were born in. Don't always be so quick to answer and look closely at who is asking the question. Another such potential scam is one that is entitled the I Look So Young Challenge. Asking for a picture of yourself. Responding to this specifically identifies yourself to potential hackers. Possibly stored in a database that can be later used with facial recognition software. My purpose in bringing this up is to simply make our residents aware of potential hidden dangers with unintended consequences. The base, the best safeguard protecting yourself in cyberspace is to simply always exercise common sense. Thank you, Madam President. That's all I have for this evening and I want to wish everyone the rest of a happy July.
Thank you, Joe.
Thank you, Mr. Fagan. Uh, Joy Burnett, you should be able to unmute yourself. Uh, state your name and address and make your comment.
Hey, Joy Burnett, sixty-three, Pilat Place.
I'm so sorry, Ms. Burnett, I just, I'm sorry to interrupt. Can we start uh Ms. Burnett's time? Okay. Okay, go ahead, Ms. Burnett. Thank you.
Okay, sixty-three Pilat Place. Um, I'm calling, I'm, you know, coming in to just discuss. A problem that I have found for several months. Um. The garbage in the public cans down in the valley along Valley Road. Um, all the way from Northfield Avenue, all the way down to the border of Orange. Um, by the theater, those cans are not emptied regularly. Um, it's, at times they are actually overflowing. And I have made several calls. I've had to call myself because I walk my dog on a daily basis. Um, that, along that route. And I've made several calls over the past few months to the Health Department. And usually the garbage ends up getting dumped. However, um, I called back on June eleventh. And a week later, the garbage was still not dumped, so I called the Department of Public Works. And then within days, the cans were removed. There were several cans that were removed. Um, from the um Valley Road, Kingsley. And um, yeah, that, that little intersection there. Um, also down a little bit further. So a lot of the cans have now been removed, I guess, as a result of me being concerned. Um, but I don't think the cans need to be removed. I think. That the job needs to be done that the garbage is dumped because it's still not being dumped, especially. At the park across from the seven eleven, that little seating area has two garbage cans. The garbage today was garbage day. I just passed by there again, walking my dog, and the garbage is still not dumped. Um, I've mentioned to the mayor as well as I've mentioned, I've called the Health Department. Because we also have had, since those buildings have been built over there on Central Avenue, there's been a rat problem. Down in um the Valley section and the Health Department has come out several times and baited. So I don't want the cans removed. It's obvious that people are using them. I would think we would need more cans since they are filling up and overflowing. But I think that we need to make sure that. The Refuge Company is actually removing the garbage. Um, and as I said, over at that park area, I don't mind that people sit there. I think that's great. But of course, we'd rather have them putting their garbage in the cans than littering. But the cans literally are overflowing and they are not being emptied. So that's um my major concern. I want where I live to be clean. I continue to walk even further down on Valley into Orange by Hat City Kitchen and those cans are always empty. So I'm a little embarrassed that we can't seem to get it done in West Orange, but they're doing it just a couple blocks away. And I was really a little annoyed that they decided the resolution. To this issue was to remove several of the cans from the neighborhood. We have a lot of foot traffic. Um, you know, especially now in the summer. And I think that the cans need to remain and as I said, perhaps more need to be added. But removing the cans is not a solution. And the garbage, as I said, is still not being picked up on a weekly basis. So that's the end of my comment.
Thank you very much for your comment, Ms. Burnett. We will uh respond to everyone's comment at the end of uh public um comment period.
Uh, Sally Malanga, you should be able to unmute yourself, state your name and address and make your comment. Sally, are you there?
Yes, I am there. Hello, Sally Malanga, Ridge Road.
Go ahead. Hello, Ms. Malanga.
Hello. Good evening. On behalf of our Green West Orange members, I'd like to comment on three issues. Number one, we support the purchase from Crestmont Country Club of ninety-four acres of forested land. This will be an important addition to protect us from flooding. I'd like to remind you as well that on the other side of town, the Mount Pleasant twelve-acre forest remains unprotected. And with its crucial geographic position. Holding back millions of gallons of water from Mount Pleasant Avenue, it too requires your attention to be acquired in all due haste. We are looking for champions among you to take up the cause of protecting public health from climate change. And preserving trees is one of the most comprehensive and economical ways to do so. This leads me to the second issue, the contract renewal of Town Forester John Linson. For the purpose of managing our street trees, we strongly object to this renewal. We will now have two foresters instead of one. But to suggest two foresters comes across as a strange strategy. It seems like a contrivance to maintain the employment of Mr. Linson for the sole purpose of taking down our street trees. I've given you the statistics at previous meetings. Our street trees are large, they're historic. They represent fifteen percent of a homeowner's property value. They encourage street calming and provide. Precious shade during climate change. They hold back water from flooding private property. Yet Mr. Linson is at odds with the economic value of trees. He is aggressive in taking down our healthy street trees. Where do they go? They go to the recycling center and they're turned into common wood chips, mulch. I was advised recently that he removed a hundred and fifty trees in twenty twenty. There are at least two dozen streets scheduled to be repaved this year. When this happens, Township Engineer Lynn Lepore. And Forester Linson personally knock on home. And forester Linsen personally knock on homeowners' doors to persuade them to agree. To take down their healthy street trees at great economic expense to the township. And environmental expense to the community. Renewing this man's contract is tantamount to acknowledging that you don't care about the conflict. Nor the economic loss. Please send this back to the drawing board. On our third issue, our Green West Orange members are wondering about a thirteen million dollar bond issue to bail out Prism. Development in the downtown redevelopment area. This warrants public hearings and transparency. Our members are asking you to schedule public hearings and explain exactly what this bailout entails. Why are you bonding it before an appraisal? What are all the costs? What is the value of the property? Which properties are they? And who are the principals involved who will be paid with taxpayer dollars? This concludes my remarks. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Malanga.
Thank you. Come on, go back. No, pause. Kadir Myers, Myers, you should be able to unmute yourself.
Yes. Yes, good evening. Can you hear me okay?
Yes, Myers, we can.
Okay, thank you so much. I'm Kadir Myers. I reside on Marion Drive in West Orange. Thank you, esteemed council. I have a couple of points that I'd like to make this evening. I will talk a little rapidly because I have a lot of stuff that I want to say. I'll start off with tenant rights. With the imminent resumption of eviction trials and the end of the moratorium. On lockout set to expire, it is more important than ever that we have a fully operational rent leveling board and rent control office. West Orange has a rent control ordinance that serves as an important tool in preventing displacement and keeping West Orange housing affordable. But right now, important provisions of that ordinance cannot be carried out due to a sheer lack of funds. Resources and an apparent lack of political will to do so. Presently, West Orange is unprepared to handle the prospective onslaught of grievances and inquiries from tenants and landlords. As well as their advocates. Do we have an entity that is ready to answer questions about compliance with New Jersey's landlord identity law? What about rent registration and code enforcement? Where do tenants go to file a grievance? Where do landlords go to file a petition or to register their rent? What about code enforcement? Some of our, some of our tenant constituents have habitability concerns. Who do they turn to for inspections, especially when the landlord refuses to abate certain deficiencies? Now, as I look at the agenda, tonight's agenda, I see a lot of money being earmarked for quote-unquote "social services." How much of that money is being set aside for rental assistance? Is that not a social service? How much is being set aside for critical services like rent control and code enforcement? So that our tenant residents can maintain decent, affordable housing? I behoove the council to earmark emergent funds in the current budget to expand the West Orange Rent Control Office. Which is a critical service that our residents will heavily rely on as we recover from the economic fallout of the COVID nineteen pandemic. Next on my topic of discussions, interpreter services. Now, while I appreciate the language widget on the township website. Similar language access tools are lacking at public meetings. We have a township where multiple residents speak languages other than English. And the safety and well-being of West Orange is jeopardized when residents are unable to access municipal services. Or communicate effectively with our agencies. Effective language access promotes civil participation and equity and is a necessary component. Of the township's ability to accomplish its mandates. Our ESL residents pay taxes too. And they should not be left in the dark about government dealings due to a lack of language access. And before anyone rejoins by telling me that folks can access the website, let me state that although the digital divide is shrinking across the nation. According to a recent study, nearly one thousand West Orange residents. Lack broadband internet coverage. And those who do have broadband internet may simply have it for their children and they do not rely on it for communicating with their government. Language assistance is a basic civil right. Council, I beseech you, let's do the right thing, introduce legislation that mandates language access. Townshipwide in all of the township-wide languages. And finally, the cannabis bill. That's codified as Resolution one eight eight dash two one on the agenda. Communities of color have been disparately harmed by marijuana legislation for far too long. According to a recent report by the ACLU, black people have been, have been arrested. Three and a half times more often than white people. I therefore behoove the council to make social equity a priority. In this task force and advisory committee regarding cannabis business in the township of West Orange. Codified as Reso one eight eight dash two one on the agenda. I thank you so much for your time. Have a good evening.
Thank you, Ms. Myers.
Okay, Claire Silvestri, you should be able to unmute yourself. State your name and address and make your comment.
Got it. Thank you. Good evening, Claire Silvestri, Twenty Granville Avenue.
Good evening.
Hi, I see this as another jam-packed council meeting agenda. And so first, I want to express my surprise and dismay at the several agenda items having to do with the Edison Downtown. Redevelopment project phase two. Back in late February, at the council's workshop session focused on the executive drive redevelopment project. Mayor Parisi indicated that Edison Phase Two was in some kind of limbo. The next evening at the council meeting, I asked the question, what was going on with Phase Two? A project that had received council approval, I believe, four years ago, but had seen no progress to date. My question that night was ignored by all council members and administration. And now, without a word mentioned about Phase Two in more than four months. It appears the town administration is moving at breakneck speed. To remove Prism as the designated redeveloper and take the bold step. Of attempting to acquire all the property in the redevelopment zone that is not already owned by the town. Without any transparency with the public. Council president, could you please explain why you took the unusual step of having the council vote outside a public meeting? On Resolution one seventy-six dash twenty-one. The resolution authorizing hiring an appraiser for the Phase Two redevelopment properties. And why have you allowed to appear on tonight's agenda, Ordinance two six five one dash twenty-one on first reading? Which authorizes the borrowing of thirteen million dollars, thirteen million dollars. To acquire the properties in that redevelopment zone. Asking council members to vote without providing any prior information. On this incredibly large transaction to the people who will be footing the bill. I know most of you were not on the council when this project was originally proposed and subsequently approved by the council majority. But there were detailed presentations and numerous opportunities for the residents to comment. And of course, there never was any discussion of the township taking on the burden of purchasing any of the properties. In fact, the redeveloper was to purchase two parcels that house the DPW and animal shelter from the town. This is a monumental change in a very significant project. Not only removing the redeveloper, but I expect changing the very nation nature, I'm sorry, of what's been approved in the past. I am certainly not a fan of more residential development. But I do know that there is a substantial affordable housing component that was pushed off from Phase One into Phase Two. That the township is obligated to fulfill. And from language in the legislation, it appears the town is expecting to acquire some properties through condemnation. Which is a rather controversial move. I strongly urge the council to vote down all the legislation associated with Edison Phase Two. Until members of the public receive a substantive presentation. And have the opportunity to ask questions as well as adequate time to voice their opinions on the project. Separately, I wish to express my opposition to Resolutions one eighty and one eighty-seven dash twenty-one. Which split the town forester's position into two jobs. Not only retaining the current forester, Mr. Linsen, who's been roundly panned by residents for years. But also giving him what appears to be a ten dollar an hour raise over the other forester. Could someone please explain how this makes any sense to, to the residents? And finally, I mentioned at the last council meeting that despite being on the distribution list. For receiving the council agenda and its revisions via email, since the process was put in place years ago. I had not received any notifications for the June twenty-first meeting. Again, I have not gotten any notifications from the Agenda Center for this meeting either. Now that it's happened twice in a row, council president, would you please direct the town clerk to investigate the matter and report back at the next council meeting? Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Silvestri.
The phone number is nine seven three six zero nine two eight seven four and you're going to press star six to unmute.
Hi, I'm unmuted.
Yes, you are.
Yes.
Great. Hi, everyone. My name is Imani Oakley. I am a resident of Montclair, New Jersey. And I heard that Donald Payne was speaking tonight and I thought that I should stop by and speak as well. I am currently running to replace Donald Payne for his congressional seat. And, you know, tonight he talked about how much he does that he doesn't really go and talk about. And that would be comical if it wasn't so tragic. Donald Payne has been in that seat for a decade and has done nearly next to nothing for this district. In fact, about a month ago, do you guys remember when we had that coup back in January where people stormed the White House? Well, the Homeland Security Committee is the committee responsible for investigating that. Responsible for protecting our country. And Congressman Payne showed up to the Homeland Security Committee, literally getting out of bed in his boxers. While the rest of his colleagues were dressed, ready for business and ready to take on. Figuring out what happened with that coup so we could protect our country. That is not the person that you want representing you in Congress. We just went through four years of gross devastation with Donald Trump. Before that, we went through years of gross devastation with the housing crisis, the economic crisis. We do not have time to have members sitting in their seats just to keep them warm. We need people who will actively fight for you. And Donald Payne is not that person. I've been going around talking to different activists and different voters. I've talked to immigrants rights activists and if you've all been keeping up with the news, New Jersey has a very serious problem with ICE right now. We've had people who have been raped in detention centers. There have been maggots found in food in detention centers. And immigrants rights groups have gone to Donald Payne and he shooed them away, saying, oh, this isn't in my district. Or what do you want me to do about it? Similarly, environmental activists have gone to Donald Payne. And talked about the lead in our waters and the lead in old homes and apartment buildings. And he looked at them and says, well, what do you want me to do about it? Well, the answer is they want you to do your job. They want you to legislate. They want you to fix your problems because that is what a representative does. And I can understand why Donald Payne would be confused about what a representative does. Because he inherited the seat from his father. He is the beneficiary of a corrupt ballot design that we have here in New Jersey. And it's time that he be replaced. And I'm going to be the one to replace him. I have worked on the federal level in New Jersey politics. I have worked on the state level in New Jersey politics. And I've also worked on the grassroots level in New Jersey politics and I have lived in this district my entire life. And I, like the rest of you should be, am fed up and I would like a representative who will truly fight for the people of this district and all of their needs. And so I'll end by saying, please visit my website at oakleyforcongress, that's F O R, again, that's oakleyforcongress.com. Check out my policies, check out my background, because come June twenty twenty-two. I am confident that I will replace Donald Payne and that we will have a new fighter in Congress. Thank you so much, everybody, for having me. Have a great night.
Thank you. Ken Alper, you should be able to unmute yourself, state your name and address and make your comment.
Thanks, Deb. Hi, Ken Alper, forty-five Columnor Terrace. While I'm obviously a private citizen these days, my comments are informed by my experience as a past member and former president of the West Orange Board of Ed. I've got serious concerns about the marijuana ordinance that's up for second reading tonight and I strongly encourage you to table it until those issues can be addressed. First and probably easiest to fix, you're requiring applications be shared with the Board of Ed, which is great. But you're only allowing fourteen days for the board to respond. The board often doesn't have a meeting within any given fourteen day period. And for the board to be able to respond, as opposed to the superintendent on his own, they would need to meet in public and vote in order to do that legally. If you truly do want the board to be able to provide input, and this isn't just a pro forma attempt to get around that requirement. I think at least thirty days would be needed. Fourteen definitely just isn't enough. Beyond that, my concerns are primarily that there just seem to be no limitations in this ordinance about how close a marijuana retailer can be to a school. We've got zoning regulations in West Orange which limit how close a cigarette vending machine can be to a school and how close a gas station can be to a school. Marijuana sales should also have a minimum distance. As far as I can tell, it would be perfectly legal right now to open a marijuana store where the light bulb coffee shop is right across from Washington School. Or where Duncan is across from Edison or where Mark and Julie's is over by the high school. And I don't think any of that is appropriate. Further, the ordinance has a few lines in it about marijuana stores not allowing anyone underage in the stores. But unlike the township's ordinances concerning alcohol, which contain a multitude of reasons that your license to operate could be jeopardized. There doesn't seem to be a word in there about suspending or revoking marijuana licenses for violations, even for repeated ones. I look at the conditions on ABC renewals when they appear on your agendas, there doesn't seem to be anything to enable that same sort of scrutiny for marijuana licenses. And again, as far as I can tell, if you did open a store at Duncan on Main Street. And allowed sixth graders to hang out in there and even buy marijuana, there's nothing in the ordinance saying the town can suspend or revoke their license to operate. And there really should be. You know, I know there's some sense that the state may issue further regulations and guidance eventually, maybe. You know, as someone who has a lot of firsthand experience waiting for the state to issue regulations and guidance. I can tell you, I think that approach would be a mistake and I ask you to not do that, but to live up to the responsibility. We've elected you to and patch these holes in our local ordinance before it becomes law and not afterwards. And not just to collectively cross our fingers and hope the state decides to do its job. Because I can virtually guarantee you, the state will not do so. I'd further strongly encourage you to hold a true town hall meeting on this topic. Making sure those who may be less likely to see it online are fully able to attend. A real town hall discussion, not a panel discussion led by those who work in the cannabis industry. To be clear, I don't think marijuana needs to allow marijuana sales within its borders at all. I think there's much more risk than reward, especially where the same kids who we're trying to keep from vaping it are concerned. But if you are going to go down this road, I think the least you could do would be to regulate it at least as strictly as you do alcohol and even tobacco. At least where our children are concerned. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Melinda Lee, you should be able to unmute yourself, state your name and make your address and make your comment. Ms. Lee? Ms. Lee, are you? It says you're unmuted, but we cannot hear you.
Can we come back to her if she can't get? Okay, I just don't want to send her away, but definitely want to come back to her.
I heard her. Her volume was just very, very low.
All right, Ms. Lee, if you come back, I'll put you on after the next person. I apologize. Michaela Bennett, you should be able to unmute yourself, state your name and address and make your comment.
Can you hear me okay?
Yes. Yes, you can.
Okay, Michaela Bennett, Old Indian Road. So I'd like to ask the council to reject. The thirteen million dollar downtown redevelopment bond. But by doing so, let me just start with history, the Stein Report and Executive Drive. What does any of that have to do with downtown redevelopment? I'll get to that in just a minute. But I'd like to remind you of a couple of things before I get into the point of my public comment. I stood before this council and advised of what I believe to be impropriety at OSPEC. Two years ago, I brought what I believed to be fraud and theft to your attention. Because I knew it needed to be investigated in order for our community to be kept safe and free from corruption. This council did not investigate. And since not only was a former board member of NJAI at OSPEC elected to the council. She has appointed the criminally charged former public information officer to the township's Public Relations Commission. A simple investigation could have avoided all of that. A simple investigation could have avoided all of that. Hopefully, this council has acted to protect this township now that the Essex County Prosecutor's Office has charged with theft exactly what I reported to all of you. I remind you all, your friendships should never cloud your judgment or service to the township. You should not be texting thieves while running a council meeting, nor should you ignore the evidence of theft and corruption when it involves your friends. Your duty is to us, the township and taxpayers of West Orange. This council has obligations when an official position is misused or when the administration intentionally covers up theft. That is squarely this council's domain and duty, and disregarding such responsibility causes a complicity, in my opinion, a culpable complicity. But let me pivot, because history may prove this point better than I can. The Stein Report and Executive Drive, our history. Forensic clinicians all know, history is the best predictor of future behavior. That's true with criminals, and it's true with corruption. If you're willing to behave badly, you're likely to do so again and again and again. It makes sense, right? The process to vet fraud and corruption is very simple. You look at history, how a person historically behaves, and it will generally predict their future behavior. Someone like Matthew O'Donnell would pay to play over and over again until they're caught. And once they've paid to play, clearly, they'd be much more likely to blur other bright lines and bend other boundaries, right? It makes sense. So look at the Stein Report. Why? Because it is filled with the history of the Downtown Redevelopment Plan, as conceptualized by then Township Attorney Trank, with prompting from Mr. Millennium Holmes himself, also known as the BNE Executive, who back in 2004 suggested pairing Organon with the Downtown Redevelopment Plan for better profitability. Prism is at the table back then. BNE is at the table back then. Trank is at the table back then. Rexson is at the table back then. And so is Parisi, O'Donnell, and a group of men who historically and presently are allowed to get rich at the township and taxpayers' expense. Executive Drive is mentioned in the Stein Report, written in 2007, as a location that Trank and others needed to, quote, "vacate." They all told on themselves way back then. History, sitting right there, waiting for the careful eye to read it. You know what else is in the Stein Report? Two attorneys and Stein himself, concerned about the undervaluing, the artificial deflation of value for tax windfalls of future beneficiaries. Who? Who are the future beneficiaries? Trank was. BNE, AKA Millennium Holmes, AKA Larry Pantier, Alan Pine, and Howard Schwartz were. Parisi was, and I'm pretty sure there were others as well. Who pays for your flyers and endorsements? Who does the title work? Who sells the real estate? Don't approve the purchase of the Edison complex until you know the history, because our township government relies on you being a check and balancing to an administration off the rails. This administration and its greed manufactured the tax crisis we are in. Stop listening to the spin of those desperate to have you believe their fairy tales and know the actual factual history. Your oath is to us, the township and its taxpayers. Blindly believing bad actors, protecting phony friends will only embarrass you and cause an inextricable complicity. So far, history has shown you, I don't say it unless I can prove it. And what I've said has been proven true at the schools and at OSPEC. And I will certainly prove the tangled web of corruption that connects the Edison complex with Organon and Executive Drive. Investigate the impropriety, please. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Bennett. Ms. Lee, let's try again and see if we can hear you this time.
Hello?
Yes, now we can hear you.
Perfect. My apologies. I don't know what was going on earlier. My name is Melinda Huerta. I'm on the Board of Education here in West Orange. My address is 17 Park Drive South. And I just wanted to make a few comments. One is from following off a little bit on the West Orange historian Joe Fagan. He did mention the Olympics, and I just wanted to kind of give a little addition that karate martial arts is also in the Olympics this year for the first time, and in Japan nonetheless. So that was very exciting news for us as martial artists, and we were very excited about that. I did want to echo the comments of Mrs. Kabira Myers for the Rent Leveling Board, and just make a little few clarifications. We do not meet twice a month. We only meet once a month. One of my concerns is that there are only audio recordings available on the website. I think it would be helpful to have the whole Zoom meeting up on the website, because it does get confusing on who is speaking. And so I think it would just make it easier, accessible, and understandable for the community. And we definitely would need, now, there is a concern with how our tenants are accessing the information, how our landlords are able to, I'm sorry, how our landlords are able to be informed as well. They could be also, you know, not sure of the ordinance themselves and therefore in violation of the ordinance. I just think that there needs to be more done in regards to safeguarding both our landlords and our tenants, making sure that our tenants know that they're rights. There is a, there has been some concern and intimidation going around with our tenants. And Mrs. Myers also made mention of code enforcement, habitability concerns within our town as well. So I know that these are some of the concerns that were brought up. And I just wanted to echo those, and as well as language access. So yes, we are a community with many different languages, and we speak many different, many different languages here. And so our community members need to be able to feel comfortable. We did have one public comment at our last event leveling board meeting, and it saddened me that our resident felt embarrassed, and she apologized profusely for her poor English. And it just made me feel that, to me, touches home, because a lot of the reasons why our community members are not comfortable speaking is because they are embarrassed that they can't be well-understood, or they can't express themselves fully. They don't want to be misunderstood. They don't want to be labeled and made felt, made feel less than, you know. And so then, that was another one of my concerns. And just going off a little bit on the marijuana legislation, I, currently sitting on the Board of Education, haven't received any information on what's going on with these legislations. And it's, you know, a bit concerning to me that I'm not sure where the disconnect is. You know, we haven't heard anything. I don't know if this is, you know, a miscommunication between the board members and myself, or the superintendent of schools and ourselves, or is it the town, because we do have town liaisons, but there has been no mention of this. A couple of the concerns that the town liaisons have been, between the board and the town, have been the development issues. Yes, Norfield Avenue is having some development, some development, potential development going up. But also, 410 Main Street in West Orange is a less talked-about project. But it is also a concern for us as well here in town and with our neighbors. So thank you for your time, and have a great evening, everybody.
Thank you.
All right. A Paglusi, if you can state your full name after you unmute yourself and address, and then make your comment.
Hi, this is Anthony Paglisi, representing County Executive Joe DiFincenzo. Just want to go over briefly some of our upcoming events. Of course, every summer, we have our summer concerts, which are returning this year. We were a little unlucky with our Brookdale Fireworks Spectacular. It's been canceled a couple times because of the weather. We are going to do a third attempt this Friday at 7:30, and that's in Bloomfield and Montclair. The rest of our schedule in the summer concerts begins in August. Also currently underway is Wellness on the Waterfront. Each night, we have a different activity taking part, taking place at the Clipper Pavilion off of Cherry Lane. And that's it. Like I said, that's every evening. Activities start there about 6:30 every night. Every Wednesday, at the parking deck at Turtleback Zoo, is our zoovies. That's weather permitting as well. And then also a Turtleback Zoo every Wednesday and Thursday nights. In July and August, we have extended hours through 8 o'clock, where you can visit the zoo into the evening when it's a little cooler. And when it's cooler, the animals are a little more active as well. To keep you updated on our vaccines, we are continuing to operate vaccination centers at Kmart and Essex County College. We also have a very active mobile outreach program, going to churches and community centers. We are centering most of that activity in urban areas, because that's where the vaccination rate is the lowest. But if you do have some site available, if you want to reach out to me, if you think it's necessary, we can always schedule something. Earlier this week, we also debuted our mobile health van, which will make us even more mobile and be able to reach out into the community even more. For instance, on their first night, they were at a Ben's Basketball League, I believe it was in Newark. And we actually vaccinated about 40 people at that event. So activities like that can help us boost up the vaccination rates. We are also continuing free testing for Essex County residents. And again, those are at our Kmart and Essex County college sites. And then we do have two ongoing assistance programs for people who are experiencing some challenges in paying their rent or their utilities because of the pandemic. We do have an assistance program that can help with that. And also for nonprofit organizations who have offered assistance programs in the community during the pandemic, can also apply for funds through Essex County to help continue those programs. Everything I've said as far as events goes is on our website. In our, there's an events tab. And then with the vaccines, testing, and the two assistance programs, that's also on our website. There's a red box on the homepage. Each one of those things has a separate link that you can click and get directly to that. And as always, our website is essexcounty.org. Just thank you for the opportunity to share this information with you. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Paglisi.
All right, and we have one more speaker. As I say, that more hands are coming up. Joe Krakowak, if you can unmute yourself, state your name and address, and then make your comment.
Good evening, and special thanks to Congressman Payne for his informative visit. I speak in opposition to the lack of transparency on what is going on with the Edison Downtown Redevelopment Phase II, after nearly four years of inaction and no construction.
Can we just state your name and address first, please? I'm sorry.
No, I apologize myself. It's Joe Krakowak, Grandview Avenue.
Thanks.
I speak in opposition to the lack of transparency on what is going on with Edison Downtown Redevelopment Phase II, after nearly four years of inaction and no construction. Now the council is having executive sessions and approving crucial and expensive actions without any public notice, explanation, or discussion. I also oppose the town and its taxpayers borrowing $13 million to buy the properties in the Phase II redevelopment area. According to the debt statistics on the town website, since the beginning of 2019, issued and authorized debt has risen $33.7 million, an amazing 42%, to a total of $113.6 million at the start of this year. If the council approved this borrowing request, along with a companion request for $3.4 million for the new library, debt would have risen by an astounding $50.1 million, or 63%, to approximately $130 million, of which any principal repayment so far this year, in only two and a half years. With interest rates rising, this is a recipe for potential financial and taxpayer disaster. I urge the council to vote down this $13 million request on first reading tonight. Once the public has had time to learn what is happening and what you want to happen, and agrees with it, you can be a back for consideration anytime you want. I urge the council to reconsider its approval of Resolution 176-21, which authorized hiring a firm to appraise the properties in the redevelopment area and to help with negotiation of purchases, referencing your agreement with a $13 million borrowing. This was done outside of a council public meeting with no notice to the public, either before or after the council took this action. As our charter allows, you can vote rescind that approval tonight. I also urge council members to recommit to total transparency and accountability on Phase II, starting right now. I have many questions. What is going on with the Notice of Default to Prism? Why now, after four years of inaction? What Prism actions are cited in the Notice of Default? Where does the situation stand now? Why aren't the communications cited in Resolution 176-21 not up on the website already? What's the plan going forward with Phase II, and why haven't you shared it with the public before making such a major commitment to borrow $13 million? Buy the properties and expose the town to more risk and cost? Losing another four years of inaction and no improvements? What makes you think you're not hurrying out of the frying pan and into the fire? Exposed to losing even more time and perhaps money this time? How much discussion did the council engage in on this issue? Implying redevelopment properties has never been done in this town before, before taking your vote. When was that discussion, and how long in total was the subject discussed? What was the vote on Resolution 176-21 by councilperson? When was the vote taken? Why did each of you not think it important to inform the public what you're doing, even after you did it? How do you even know $13 million is a correct number? Have you seen any estimates of the cost of purchasing the property? How can you even know this number before the appraisal company has done its appraisals, purchasing negotiations have taken place? Have you seen the state required supplemental debt statement for these two proposed borrowings? If so, what is the expected total issued and authorized debt outstanding if this debt is approved? And what is the ratio of debt to equalize tax base? Do any of you know how much debt town has authorized and issued since Mayor Parisi became mayor? If this debt is approved tonight and at the next meeting, next hearing, the town would have more than doubled its outstanding debt in less than 11 years, to nearly $130 million. Are you concerned at all about the level of debt, rising interest rates, and how we're going to repay without further burdening taxpayers? What are you going to do about the town's obligation to provide 44 units of affordable housing that was supposed to be provided by Prism in Phase II? Prism promised contractually to build Phase II and Phase I in 2006. Prism couldn't secure financing for Phase I, so they lost virtually all of its ownership to others who could have painted financing, and even now has a line of empty retail fronts on Main Street that have been there forever. Then there's Phase II, where it apparently couldn't secure financing. After 15 years of horrendous results, how could you not commit right now to never having anything to do with that company again? How could you also not commit tonight to a competitive process to find a highly qualified redevelopment?
Ms. Krakowak, your time is up.
Yes, thank you, Council President.
Thank you.
It's a lot of questions. I'm just going to send an email to the council now so that you'll have them in front of you. Thank you for your time, and.
You're welcome.
All right. Joyce, you should be able to unmute yourself, state your full name and address, and then make your comment.
Good evening, council members. This is Joyce Rudin, Woodland Avenue. My comment tonight is in regard to the forester. If the idea to bifurcate this position to keep Mr. Linton away from residents is the idea behind the division of this job, that's simply not going to work, because Mr. Linton will continue to have interactions with the public as more and more street trees come down and neighbors become more and more irate. This already happened on Rollinson, on Barbara, on other streets where, where Mr. Linton was involved in actively convincing residents that trees needed to be removed. So I really don't understand why we need two foresters to do the job that one person could do. Mr. Farr is well-experienced. He's coming in at a lower rate. I do not see the need to continue the current forester in the position when there have already been so many complaints. I don't think that the solution that seems to be offered tonight is a real solution. And again, I urge you not to vote for the renewal of the forester's contract. not to vote for the renewal of the forester's contract. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, one last call, just to make sure that there's nobody that has anything to say. That was our last hand up. All right, Ed, I'm going to turn the meeting back over to you, uh, Ms. Matu Brown.
Thank you very much for your assistance this evening. I I just want to just make sure that I get everyone's uh, response. Thank you, Mr. Fagan, for always bringing our history um, and maintaining it in the forefront and present for us. It's very exciting to to know that we come from um, at least we were represented in the Olympics, so that's exciting. Uh, Ms. Burnett, I um, am going to ask, I'm not sure if Chief Abbott is here, um, he's still with us. But I'm going to ask uh, for him to um, discuss or or find out for us why the trash cans aren't being emptied, maintained, and then eventually were removed. I myself have had some concerns as I go down in the valley area about the lack of um, maintenance in that area. So we will definitely get to the bottom of this. Uh, if um, Chief Abbott is on to make a comment, I really appreciate that as well. Um, Ms. Malanga, thank you for your comment and support of the ninety-four forests, um, ninety-four acre forest. Uh, we're still waiting to hear back uh, where we are with that as well. Um, you also commented on the bondage. I'll just answer um, towards the end. Ms. Myers, thank you for your um, passion, your commitment, and your interest um, with respect to our rent leveling board. I really appreciate your representation on that rent leveling board and do agree that in this time, while it it didn't seem relevant in the past for the township to have a rent office to provide assistance. I I do support the fact that we need to do better, which means we need to do more um, in protecting our residents and and particularly during this time where once the moratorium is over, unfortunately, we're going to see a lot of that. Um, and Ms. Ms. uh, Melinda Lee, um, your statement with respect to how you felt um, listening to that resident profusely apologize and how that was personal to you, I can tell you as first generation immigrant child here and having to be the interpreter for my families. It's incredibly embarrassing. It's incredibly challenging and difficult. And I will say that while my first language is English and being born here in this country, I went to school and learned um, English and ESL. My first language was Spanish, I'm sorry. But I learned English in in school. It still doesn't qualify me as a translator. I I can provide some assistance uh, in translating and it's my first language, so I write and 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 read it fluently and speak it fluently. But do agree that we have to do something better, particularly when we have such a large population um, of diverse English language speakers. So thank you for that and and look forward to having that conversation. And let's see who else. Ms. Silvestri, um, as you know, I'm as I'm sure or anticipate that you know, the jam packed agendas in the summer are the result of having summer scheduled for our town council meetings with with your husband being a former council member. I'm sure that um, you you can recall that that is the reason why and no other. We have one meeting a month. And so we have to get all of our business in because it is our summer schedule. Um, you also mentioned the um, not receiving notifications from the agenda. Um, I'm not sure if it is a reason for your server, um, your provider. I still do on my personal email receive those notifications from the township as well as notifications when it comes to bid. So perhaps it may have something to do with your server, but perhaps um, you can reach out to Madam Clerk directly or to the mayor's um, secretary, Ms. Quirk to.
Council President?
Yes.
Um, Ms. Quirk does have information regarding that issue.
Okay.
Um, at the last meeting, I reached out to her during the meeting. Um, she said that it's a block from Verizon, Yahoo, and AOL as they apparently share a server and same owner. Somehow emails such as we uh, as we sent are labeled spam by these servers. We have tried to get around that by using different keywords, but to no avail. So she asked if I had uh, Ms. Silvestri's email address. I did not, and I did send a chat during that meeting. I don't know if it was seen or not, but I had no way of reaching um, Ms. Silvestri at that point. And um, but Ms., I talked to Ms. Quirk this evening and she uh, said if we could get her email that she would send her further explanation.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Uh, Ms. Silvestri, if you can um, participate in in resolving this with um, Ms. Shari Quirk, please send her an email with your email address and hopefully there will be some remedy to um, the issue that keeps the emails from reaching your inbox. Um, you asked for a clarification or an explanation, I think it was that you said, um, with respect to having the council vote electronically outside of the um, public view. I did reach out to our council and advise that there is in fact an error on the resolution which you referred to. That resolution is one seventy-six twenty-one. The ninth where as clause does incorrectly assert that they the uh, vote on this resolution was done electronically. I'm going to ask that the public refer to the minutes of the last council meeting. Those minutes will indicate that this resolution was adopted in public on June twenty-second, twenty twenty-one. That resolution is Resolution one sixty dash twenty-one. Uh, that will be modified before we move on this resolution. But the resolution was not done in secret. It was held and discussed in public and passed during that meeting. So please refer to the minutes of that um, June twenty-second. What is on here for this is the amending of the resolution. But there was no public vote, uh, no private or secret vote taken. And um, let's see. Mr. Alver, I completely understand um, your concerns and agree that government works very slow. Uh, but I I have in the past provided that we are going to, and and it's on this evening's agenda, create a cannabis workforce that will help um, establish parameters around which we will permit that's inclusive of the zoning uh, cannabis um, businesses to participate in West Orange. I have asked the chief of police if he would sit on on the um, cannabis task force as well as a few other stakeholders in the community. So while we have to pass this ordinance in advance of the deadline, which is August twenty-first, there are full intentions, and we have stated this in the past during the last um, town council uh, meeting as well as during our town hall discussions, that we are going to amend this. Unfortunately, right now, we are working within the confines of the deadline that the state has provided, which is August twenty-first. Not passing this resolution tonight completely allow, makes us I I want to say, um, I I'm not going to say, it it keeps, it keeps us out of control for any um, cannabis business to come in. Because we had the choice to opt in, which is what we're doing, or opt out. At this point, it is far too late for us to opt out, and not that I would support an opt out. That's absolutely not something that I would support. Um, at this point, we would have to do nothing, and do nothing means that we are open to everything. And that is not something that the administration or my council colleagues and I would ever want. So while it is not the perfect ordinance, it is an ordinance that will allow us to comply with state regulations and that deadline. And immediately this evening, hopefully with the support of council, we will pass a resolution to create this cannabis workforce to help create those parameters that we want to see here in our town. That does include the distances from schools. Um, the CRC has not, um, I'm sorry, the Cannabis Regulatory Commission, for those who aren't familiar with the um, acronym. They have not put out regulations with respect to um, zoning in, I'm going to say quote unquote, drug-free school zones. That they have left to the municipalities to do, and that among with other um, matters will be discussed and implemented within the cannabis workforce. So it's not that we're pushing this legislation through because we're not going to do anything further. We are trying to comply with the state deadline and um, work towards ensuring that um, all of the regulations are going to be um, effective to protect our residents and our business owners as well as our students. And I'm not going to address the thirteen million dollar bond right now. I'll do it at the end. Ms. Bennett, thank you for your comments as well with respect to um, the inaction of the council as I I responded to Joe Krikoviac the last time, um, when the matter was brought to the attention of the council and we were asked to provide our investigation as as we are able to do. I was not supportive of that with respect to the OSPAC because Essex County Prosecutor's Office, who are professionals in this, who are already investigating, have the ability and the authority, more importantly, to met out um, sanctions uh, which they have at this point. So there is no way that I was going to spend taxpayer resources on an investigation that had no consequences. So um, I'm sorry that you and I differ in that position, but the county prosecutors want to do what they were going to do, and they did, and I trusted that they would. So we will wait to see the outcome of that. Um, until then, I'm not going to discuss that any further. Um, and Mr. Krikoviac, you also asked about the transparency, the years of inaction. Um, as you know, as a former council member, the reason why we have this executive session is because there's sometimes discussions that are part of negotiations or contracts or litigation or personnel matters that permit us to exclude the public, which is why there is executive session. As you well know, they're not secretive or intended to keep the public um, from knowing what the council is doing. But until we are able to discuss it publicly, we have executive session. And as you also well know, with respect to the bond ordinance that's on for this evening, it's first reading, and typically, we do have a discussion before second reading or at second reading. I have asked the administration, as I have asked for everything else we've done since I was sworn in as council president, that we do have a workshop. At this time, it's only introduction on first reading. And so when the time is appropriate and when we're able to, we will certainly discuss that as we have in this um, last seven months that I have been council president. Um, with respect to the forester, I look forward to having that discussion with my council colleagues um, when we get to the resolutions. Um, at this time, I am going to go in a different order, and Councilwoman Williams.
Thank you, Council President.
You're welcome.
Um, I'd like to just thank the public for all of your attention, commentary, uh, interaction via email, telephone calls uh, to express and communicate the concerns that you have regarding uh, the great township of West Orange. Um, Mr. Fagan, thank you so much for always providing your historical updates um, and for making sure West Orange is always seen uh, in a wonderful spotlight. I wanted to also address some of the additional concerns. Certainly, uh, appreciative, Ms. Malanga, of your support of the Crestmont purchase. Also willing to entertain discussions on the forester and how that is being divided up. Uh, we will address that when we address the resolution and ordinance. Um, for the rent leveling board, uh, Ms. Kabira, thank you so much as well as um, for your comments and service on that rent leveling board. Um, as you know, we are just in the process of revamping that board. Um, while that actual board had been on our books for several years, um, it had been an inactive board. Um, you have brought a tremendous wealth of knowledge into how we should function as a rent leveling board. And I am uh, certainly in agreement that all of our our members of that board are definitely interested in making it a viable board so that we can address the concerns of our residents. I think we all know October thirty-first, twenty twenty-one, the rent moratorium will come to an end. Um, we also have discussed in the board um, that it might not be practical um, and has never been a practice in West Orange for landlords um, to submit each and every one of their leases. That might be something that the board seeks to redress. Um, we do and are aware that thirty percent of our homeownership um, in West Orange is through tenancy. Um, so that would be an overwhelming burden and um, that might be just be something that we do need to, again, revisit. Many other towns do not have um, that practice and and some other towns are a much higher uh, tenancy township than West Orange. Um, I agree, we do need to make sure um, that we address um, all our different languages and and have an interpreter. And again, some of those concerns um, need to be handled in a in a capacity where if someone expresses the need um, for a translator, um, then certainly we should be able as a community to provide that service to them. Um, it is certainly an uncomfortable feeling um, for anyone to feel that they are less than because they do not speak the language as their primary language. Um, I think that that has never been the intent of any of our administrative bodies, and um, that is something that I definitely think we as a council um, can bring to the forefront and address with um, a little more concerted attention. Um, regarding uh, cannabis usage, and I am going to reiterate that it is cannabis usage. It is medical use cannabis and adult use cannabis that has been legalized in the state of New Jersey. So to imply that it is going to be available to small children is just not the the practicality of the legalization of cannabis. Um, I think that we as a council are addressing the concern of making sure we have uh, our decisions on how we would like to direct cannabis usage in the township of West Orange. We all know that the deadline um, for any type of uh, permitted use is imminent in the month of August. We also know that with the passage of this law, the CRC was created and therefore the CRC is identifying and determining the direction of what use usage should look like um, in the state of New Jersey. I attended um, a informational session on Monday at the Apothecarium in Maplewood, um, which is a medical use um, facility. Right now, in the state of New Jersey, um, it is only permissible to purchase uh, cannabis via the use of a medical card. Um, there are very strict guidelines on how um, any type of dispensary can be um, utilized. Townships certainly have the opportunity to impose additional restrictions. Um, but there are very strict guidelines um, that do um, not promote uh, any type of advertisement. Um, security is a very, very well-oiled machine. Uh, we all know that um, you don't even know that the Apothecarium in Maplewood is a dispensary. And I think that we have already exhibited um, the intent that if we were to do anything uh, dispensary in West Orange, that would be the model um, that we would try and duplicate. Um, I encourage each of you to have an opportunity to contact them, view their website um, so that you can understand and have a vision of whether or not it does come to fruition in West Orange, at least a standard um, that has been implemented in one of our neighboring towns. Uh, I think the other issues can be discussed when they come before us via resolution. Um, so I will yield any further comments to my colleagues. Thank you, Council President.
Thank you, Councilwoman Williams. Councilman Rutherford.
Uh, thank you, Council President. Uh, I'll echo uh, some of the sentiments my colleague has just made. I do thank uh, Mr. Fagan and Mr. Puglisi for their uh, timely updates. I would like to. I would like to address Ms. Burnett. She and I had an opportunity to chat about the issue that she presented to us tonight. What she left out of her discussion tonight is the how the overflowing garbage cans attract rodents to these public spaces as well. So we certainly need to, and I'm happy to follow up with DPW and Chief Appit to see what can be done and how quickly we can get it done to reinstall those garbage cans along that corridor, as well as make sure that they are on a regular pickup schedule with our garbage collectors. Ms. Malanga, thank you for your support of the Crestmont purchase. I think our Green West Orange, I thank our Green West Orange for always putting trees at the forefront, the canopy and the natural environment we have in West Orange. We are certainly happy to revisit the Mount Pleasant Forest and any other large parcels of land that we can preserve. And so we will certainly revisit that at some point. Unfortunately, it's not tonight. But you do have our attention with regard to the Mount Pleasant Forest as well. I'm going to withhold my comments on the Forrester until we get to that point. What I do want to say, and I know that there's some folks may leave the council meeting before we get to it. Several people have commented on transparency with regard to the downtown development. We hear you loud and clear. There is a process and a protocol for how we speak about these things. But certainly you will know all you need to know and have plenty of opportunity to weigh in at the proper time. Ms. Myers, I am grateful for your leadership and your service on the rent control with regards to rent control issues in town. The rental assistance issue is certainly forefront in our minds. We do know that the moratorium will expire eventually. And it appears that many of the local grassroots organizations that have been able to provide rental assistance are now running out of money. The East Orange, Orange Community Development Corporation, they do provide rental assistance, but they are no longer taking applications. And so we certainly do need to do something about it and I'm happy to discuss that with my council colleagues to see how we can be supportive of our neighbors. With regard to cannabis, we're gonna, I'm gonna reserve my comments for that with the exception of a couple of things with regard to Mr. Alper's comments. I think it's, I certainly do take your commentary seriously and I think we can certainly incorporate some of your feedback. I am a little disturbed with the tone of the email that you sent to my council colleague. And I am also concerned with how we're talking about this in public. We're not allowing children to purchase cannabis, marijuana. It's not, it's not going to happen. It is not legal for children, in this case, you mentioned sixth graders, to purchase marijuana. We cannot talk about it as if that's a possibility because we spread misinformation and then people get upset and then the process just gets muddled. There's no need to provide that type of commentary. We are not allowing children into a dispensary. They're not allowed in there. They're not allowed to look inside and shop. And even if they don't buy, they're not allowed to. And there are state, the state statute will not allow that and also will provide penalties for any licensee who violates that. With regard to the distance from schools, we are certainly looking to strengthen the ordinance as well as with regard to other community institutions like churches. Ms. Bennett brought up some very good points. And I thank her for her determination with regard to the matters at OSPEC. I do think that was a problem and I would have supported an investigation of OSPEC. And it seems now that the prosecutor has already levied some charges. And I do expect them to continue and to finish their investigation and anyone that was involved, I expect them to be held accountable. We will not allow that going forward, or at least I won't. I will do what I can to prevent that kind of activity in any of these spaces where we have influence in the township of West Orange. Ms. Huerta on the Board of Ed, I think your point about posting video and audio is well received and I'm sure that we can do something about that in the near term. And I have not seen anything recently on four-ten main, but we'll certainly follow up with you in that regard. And Mr. Kukorviak, I did receive the email that you just sent to the council. We will certainly forward that to the appropriate individuals in town and seek to get you answers to your questions. Mr. Paglisi, if you're still here, would love to, and will reach out to you with regard to your mobile health van. We are serious about trying to get folks vaccinated, especially those that are hard to reach. And so I anticipate a phone call or some outreach from me to see how we can partner with you to use the mobile van to help reach some of the more difficult people to vaccinate. That's my comments for tonight. Thank you, Council President.
Thank you, Councilman Rutherford. Councilwoman McCartney.
Thank you, Council President, and thank you to everyone this evening. And Joe Fagan for always bringing that historical perspective, either through the Olympics and Ginny Dunkle pool. I appreciate the Valley Marker, having grown up on Hazel Avenue and on the first mountain, so I appreciate the history there with the toboggan run. And particularly the information, the public information on the precautions on social media. I think that's very important that we all do take a, not jump in as quickly as we may think we should just to respond to a question. Very interesting way to look at social media questions. Ms. Burnett, thank you very much. I don't understand the logic about removing the garbage pans, garbage cans on Valley Road along the corridor. If they are overflowing, again, I know this has already been addressed to the chief to look into that because if they are overflowing, that just seems like there is just going to be that much more litter. So we do need to be on a regular basis or create that regular basis of having the garbage collected. So thank you for bringing that forward and hopefully we can address that and resolve it as well. Sally Malanga, you mentioned Crestmont, those ninety-four acres. As you already know, the council voted unanimously to work to preserve those acres because they were under threat of being developed. That is not the case on Ridge Road, so that conversation has not happened recently. So we are still, we will still pursue the ninety-four acres at Crestmont. I wanted to thank Kabira Myers for her passion and advocacy and it was timely to have the Joe, I'm sorry, Anthony Paglisi from the county talk about the county assisted assistance programs. So that was very timely to have that. And the fact that even Councilwoman Williams started the meeting with talking about the rent leveling board, which has not met in the past twenty years that I know of. So, you know, the timing is right, particularly with the moratorium expiring in October. Interesting about the language access on our township website. It seems like we're moving in the right direction because at the bottom right on our township website, you can translate anything into a number of languages. But then that raises the point of people that don't have access. So I don't know what that number is. But I want to say that we are moving in the right direction by helping people with their language access. So that is something that we should look, we could look at a little more thoroughly. Ms. Amani Oakley came on. I wish her good luck in her campaign. Ms. Bennett, I think that was an amazing historical scrutiny that you presented to us. And for Ken Alpert and Melinda Huerta, thank you for having your Board of Education hats on this evening. I mentioned also in the council liaison that the planning board did vote unanimously to make recommendation to the council on the medical and adult use zoning regulations. And as you've just heard from all of my colleagues, the CRC has not, I was hesitant. Truthfully, I was hesitant at the planning board meeting to vote there because the CRC has not come out with the state guidelines. But our discussion revolved around a lot of the issues that you raised, that the applications would be that it's similarly to the liquor license. And without the state regulations being in place, there would not be any local licenses being issued. So they have to get their state license first. So I also appreciate the late addition of Resolution one eighty-eight, that it, one eighty-eight, twenty-one? Yes, creating the task force. I think that there should be someone from planning, zoning, Board of Education particularly, definitely the police department, if it's not the chief himself or representative and residents in town to be on that task force so that we can have very comprehensive comments and recommendations to be made when the time comes for us to, when the CRC comes out with their regulations. Always a thank you to Anthony Paglisi for bringing all of that information. And I just now on my list here, I have Melinda Huerta here too. I wanted to make a point about the languages also that I think Zoom meetings were difficult for many to have access. And I think as we open up again publicly, we will meet, we will greet, we will be able to. It's much easier to communicate and meet with people once we start doing that again, hopefully very soon. Joyce Rudin made a comment about the Forrester and the contracts. Actually, I'm very pleased with these contracts that are on our agenda because during our whole budget hearing, we were talking about work that needs to be done in the planning department and with the zoning department. And one of the contracts, I was pleased that township engineers making the effort to support the zoning department with one of the contracts because that will address the increase in permits. Ever since we updated our tree ordinance, there has been a noticeable increase in the permits. So with this contract, we will have someone dedicated to work on the permits, speak to the residents, testify in court if need be and issue summonses and violations. So I think that that helps with management of our trees. And phase two, Joe Kukorviak and Claire, this is on first reading, non-binding ordinance on first reading. I have to admit that I am willing and anxious to learn more about this redevelopment project. And as soon as public information is available, I would be, of course, provide that information to the public. But I am willing and anxious to learn more. Thank you, Council President.
Thank you, Councilwoman McCartney. Councilwoman William, I'm sorry. Just, that's a habit.
Thank you, Council President. Always thank you, Anthony Paglisi, for all that the county does for us to be a great working partner. And Mr. Fagan, you know, great work bringing up these Facebook questions because I haven't been on Facebook and God, it's gotta be like six months and a while now. But I haven't been on Facebook like I was. And, you know, when those questions do pop up, your immediate reaction is to just to answer them because they are a lot of fun, but you are right. They, you know, it's all about security questions. And a lot of us, without realizing, you know, a lot of times, you know, you're creating passwords. What was the first car you ever driven? So we have to be really careful about that. But it reminded me, and I jotted a note, is we don't have any solicitation in the township, right? Currently, correct? We're not even issuing permits, correct, Ms. Cornabel?
That is correct, yes.
So I just want to remind residents that there isn't any solicitation. No one should have a permit out there and no one should be knocking on your door, so always be mindful. And there's been a lot with the fraud with phone calls that you may be receiving or an email that you may be receiving. So what I do a lot of times is when I get one of these calls and they, I'm not sure, I just Google the phone number and a lot of times it comes up spam call. So just, you know, just everyone be mindful because unfortunately there are predators out there. Ms. Burnett, in regards to the complaints about the garbage cans, I'm curious to hear what the chief comes back with with this. When I was council president last year, this was a concern. Our friends at West Orange Arts Council had walked me down the street and I saw a lot of the garbage there. What we were finding out, I'm sure it's still an issue. The culprits are the actual residents in the neighborhoods just stuffing the cans with garbage, which they're not supposed to be. That's why they fill up so quickly. And I'm not sure if that's the case, but it was last year where they were just stuffing the cans quickly and just, you know, DPW couldn't keep up fast enough because it was, as soon as they were empty, they were filled up again. So curious to hear what the chief has to say about that. Ms. Myers, you're such a great advocate and you are so passionate. I could just feel your passion. It's a lot of great comments from me and I'm glad that the committee is active. As far as the interpreter services, there's so many different ways we can be creative. I also know we had a council consensus with our deputy mayor of our Hispanic Foundation, Rodolfo Rodriguez. I know the first month on the Fridays, I'm not sure with COVID, if they're still meeting, but maybe they could go back to meeting to have a seminar and to give great information to the residents. He always gets a great turnout, so he sits on that committee and definitely utilize him because that's one of the reasons why, you know, I supported him because he does have a great insight to that community and could help and bring in interpreters for, you know, a lot of one-on-one. A lot of times we found when I was doing Eagle Rock Civic work, residents sometimes don't want to come out to a public meeting. So the smaller community meetings seem to be more successful. And I've been to quite a few Hispanic Foundation meetings. So hopefully you could work with him and he could help you with that. But you're all such a great working group and very excited to hear all the great work that you're doing. Let's hear, we'll talk about the ordinances. I assume Mr. Lepore is here because I was concerned about ten dollars more an hour for Mr. Linson and needed a read on that because unfortunately I did not ask him that last week when I talked to him about this. And before I jump to the cannabis, I do want to make a statement in regards to my former colleague. Great to hear from you and Mrs. Kukorviak. Listen, you know, we, you know, when we have negotiations, you know, we've been making presentations the past couple of years and we're going to be very transparent. And I believe Councilman Rutherford said when we're able to appropriate that information. And so these are very exciting times that I'm looking forward to this upcoming year. But to say that we're not transparent is really disappointing. And we really, you know, need not to mislead everyone with that because the mayor takes his time, we take our time. If we need a dozen community meetings, we'll have a dozen community meetings. If we need to speak to a hundred residents one-on-one, we'll do that. So whatever information is forthcoming, we always want to share with the public and we always want to make sure everyone can wrap their brains around it and understand the intricacies. You know, you said on the West Essex Highlands Committee, and you know, there was times where You know, you said on the West Essex Highlands Committee, and you know, there was times where there was negotiations. And we couldn't share certain information with the public. So when the time is right, information will be shared. And it will be really exciting to discuss. I could promise you that. In regards to, let's see, Ms. Ms. Huerta, always great to see a fellow BOE member. And thank you for your comments and for sitting on our, our commission as well as a resident. And for coming here this evening. And Mr. Alpert, always thank you for your service. You have always been a great advocate for our children. I think just knowing you for so many years and hearing some of your other comments I'm jotting down, you talked about vaping. I, I think maybe that's where your comment got mixed up with the kids. Because we, we did have, when we passed the vaping, there are a lot of minors buying. You know, we had that, that have gotten caught, you know, buying the vapes and they're not supposed to be purchasing. But I think this is going to work a lot differently. The cannabis, well, I know it's going to work a lot differently with the cannabis. And I'm not happy with the ordinance, no fault of my colleagues, very frustrated with the state. You know, as my colleagues mentioned before, we have a deadline in August, but yet they haven't, you know, given us the regulations. And I don't like operating that way. It's very frustrating. Personally, I, I had, I was not a supporter of passing this in the state. Medical marijuana, I'm okay with the recreational. I have various issues with. But it's here and as part of our responsibility, we have to deal with it. So I've been struggling with this ordinance a lot. Especially being a former school board member. And from sitting in the seat as a councilperson where so many times, you know, like, like I said, we're waiting for regulations to come out. When are they coming out? And we're expected to make decisions here this evening. So. You know, Mr. Moon, if he's on the call tonight, he was very patient with me. Council President has been really patient with me. I'm still not 100%. You know, a few more questions tonight. But this has been a struggle, but I also know I have to be a team player and work with my colleagues. For, you know, I know the support is there. I would have liked to just pass an ordinance saying, just like Roseland's ordinance. We shared it with the, with, with our council members, West Caldwell, Caldwell decided not to entertain this in their, in their townships. We, I didn't have that support. So. But I am a team player and I will work with my colleagues and I give them a lot of credit. Cause this, there's various reasons that why it's important that we have to work together on this. So I look forward to that discussion in a little bit. And did I miss anybody else? Oh, and just so you know, the Edison Lofts have a note here, our last meeting with with Jonathan Hufford, our new board member on Downtown Alliance. He is the manager there, 91% occupancy at Edison Lofts. So the lofts are filling up and that has been very exciting to see. So just wanted to share that great number with everyone. And yeah, Ms. Oakley, good luck, good luck with your, your election. We're a nonpartisan body. I have to say, really, really not cool you coming on here tonight. But that, but you know, that, that's, you know, that's, you know, the opportunity that you're given here. I have to say Congressman Payne, I've worked with him and he has always been so helpful. And just a gentleman and just has always been there for, for us here in West Orange. So a little, little disappointing to use, to use our meeting tonight for your platform. That's a council president. Oh, I do have one thing we missed. I thought you were going to say for Ospac. Everyone come out this weekend to Ospac, Smokey Joe's Cafe this weekend. Be a great time. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman Castellino. Certainly appreciate that. I did want to ask that, I know Chief Abbott. Were you able to, to reach out to the Health Department? To find out about the trash cans on Valley?
So yes, I was. I spoke with Joe Pelosi, our superintendent of Public Works. He said they're pulling about a half a dozen cans at a time from all over town to repair them and paint them. Keep them aesthetically pleasing, put them back out. One of the biggest problems as Councilwoman Castellino touched on is people that live in these corridors consistently come out with full kitchen garbage bags and stuff these cans. So you could go buy it right after, you know, it's emptied and people do that and you think it's full and it hasn't been emptied. But there has been a lack of effort on our part. Bobby DeMayo's been out and Joe Manzella has been filling in for him. So it's not like we haven't been. You know, suburban's had some staffing concerns and troubles as the rest of the world is trying to hire people. But you know, we've, we've been doubling down and doing whatever we have to do to get this done. So I, you know, I don't want to think it's anybody to think it's, it's that. And sometimes it's construction materials. You know, people come by with a pickup truck from doing construction and they dump it in air rather than pay to dump it. So if any, any residents see that, if they could report that right away, that would be helpful.
Chief, how often is the, the schedule, do you know, for the pickup from that area?
I think it's three days a week, but I'm not positive.
Councilwoman Castellino has her hand up. Councilwoman?
Thank you. Chief, have we tried putting notes on the neighbors' doors to have an educational campaign or any kind of notes on the cans themselves? See if that would be helpful.
I believe we had no household garbage on the cans going back. I can't swear to it, but I believe we did that up in the actually in, not down the valley, but up in the heights, I think we did that. It's, you know, it's people ignore it. I mean, we've put all kinds of signs up by the Colgate dumpster that the pool uses. And the other day there was a mattress there on construction material. People that are prone to doing this aren't going to really not do it because there's a sign there, to be honest with you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman Williams. I see your hand up.
Thank you, Council President. I just wanted to suggest for the neighbor, Ms. Burnett, who reported the lack of, I guess, picking up the trash. If, if you would be just a little more diligent in helping us make sure things are being done properly. And be so kind as to take a photo. And then perhaps when you walk again, since you do walk this area on a daily basis with your dog. And I'm a dog owner, so I do the same. Not in that area, but I do the same. Just, just, just to confirm, because obviously if it's trash and it hasn't been picked up, it's going to look the same way. So maybe that would help us confirm that the job is being done. And, and again, to Chief Abbott's point, that it's just, you know, unfortunately, neighbors who are taking advantage of an opportunity. Not disposing of their trash in a proper manner. But at least that would give you a level of confidence that it is the municipality doing the job that it is committed to do, to serve our residents. Thank you, Councilwoman.
Thank you, Councilwoman Williams. Thank you, Chief Abbott, for sharing that information with us. Mr. Gross, are you on? Mr. Gross?
Yes, Council President.
Thank you. I just, I meant to, and I had a note and I've completely skipped it with respect to one of the comments during public comment about the debt service in town. I want to reiterate something that Councilman Rutherford said, that when we say certain things and not give a complete picture, there's a lot of misinformation that is shared and it causes unnecessary angst within the community. Can you talk about the debt service, where we are, what's been paid down?
Okay, yes, I, I can talk about our, our current status. The township, certainly over the, over a number of years, has embarked upon a regular capital program to make improvements to roadways and buildings. And the types of things, of investments that we need to make in order to make sure that, that we protect the town's assets. And that we have the, the type of equipment necessary to make sure that we can provide services, the wanted services by our residents. Additionally to that, we've had some very other special circumstances over the past few years or opportunities to make long-term investments and some short-term investments. In, 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 in order to protect the township residents' interests. Our debt level currently with, with this issuance is about 1.9%. That's still significantly less than the 3.5%, which is the maximum the township is allowed to go without approval from the state. And, you know, our, our debt service, while certainly not, I don't minimize anything that anyone might feel or say about, about debt service. Obviously something is very important to keep an eye on and to order to protect our financial health. We, we, we continue to be rated as double A in our bond ratings by standards and pores. So I, I don't see any issue at this point in time. I know that, again, we, we do have some debt. Some significant debt on our books that we are looking forward to not having that for, for the long term. Perfect one is, is that we're, example of that is the, is the Rock Spring Golf Course, which we acquired a few years ago and that we continue, and, and, and turns out it's become a, a, provide a lot of revenue to the town last year, over $600,000. That notwithstanding, we're, you know, one of the concerns is the, is the outlay of debt in order to obtain that. And ultimately, we look forward to getting some relief on that debt through Green Acres. So we're always looking for ways to reduce our debt. We, we do pay down our debt somewhere in the area between seven and eight million dollars a year. And so while we, we do take on debt, we are aggressive about trying to pay it down. So that's an overview. Obviously during the budget process, we have and can and will continue to go into more details with that as we move along.
Thank you for, for that. I do, and it's important for us to all understand that, yeah, we do. We have increased debt service, but if we continue to ignore infrastructure that needs to be maintained and kick that can down the road, it's only going to cost us that much more to repair it. And I go back, when I look at one of my council colleague friends in a neighboring town, and I won't say his town. But they needed their town hall repaired years and years and years ago. Until the point where they had no choice but to close it down, knock it down, and then bond an incredible amount of money to rebuild their town hall. We, we do not want him. And we don't, we do not want to find ourselves in that position. And to, to the point of investing in our community, the fact that, as, as was said by former Councilwoman Krikoviac, that there's been four years of inaction. And I can say that while I was on the council and he was my colleague. He continuously called for the default of Edison Lofts. And I am thrilled that we are finally making very difficult decisions to allow us to make different choices. So the investment, as far as I see this, is well worth for all of us as we move forward. Together in progress and see a town and reimagine a town that we all want to live in. So I do want to, oh, and the last thing I have for you, Mr. Gross, if you can, because Councilwoman Castellino reminded me. With respect to Edison Lofts, the, the 91% of the occupancy rate has, has that surpassed the estimated revenue anticipated?
I won't say that it has surpassed it, but it's certainly. We're, we're very pleased at, at what has become certainly over the last year or so, a, a rapid escalation. So we're, we're pleased with that outcome.
That, that is good to hear. Thank you very much. Did any of my colleagues have anything else before we move on? I did want to see if the mayor was available. So if you, if you can just give me a moment. I wanted him to comment on some of the public comments as well. If he can join us, that would be great.
I'm on the meeting, Council President.
Oh, hello. That was a surprise. How are you? Welcome. And thank you for joining us. Would be, we would all love for you to address the concern of the first reading. Although we all participate in saying this is first reading, but I would like you to share as well. Please.
So obviously we're talking about the ordinance, we understand, and I appreciate the significance of this. But, but we can't simply ignore what is a 20-year history with, with our downtown and redevelopment. It was one of the first redevelopment zones even created in New Jersey after the state created the legislation in the late 90s. So, you know, we have to kind of keep all that in context. So I understand it's a big ask of the council, as some of this is, is still a moving target. But, but the township recognized that at that time. And, and I think is, that has been echoed several times over the years of the significance of the downtown and what that means to the community. So clearly, I don't think anyone's completely happy with where the project and the zone has gone in its entirety. But we're not, we're not talking tonight about phase one, we're talking about phase two. And, and I would say that phase one, despite some concerns that many people still have, is, has been a huge, a huge success. And again, let's, let's look at this in context. This was an old abandoned factory. It was old and unique, but it was difficult with several challenges were created. And, and Councilwoman McCartney was there. No developers wanted to touch it. Many professionals told the township, we were kidding ourselves and even trying to get that redeveloped because of the challenges and because of the cost. But the township put its faith in Prism. And they waited out three years of litigation that went all the way to the state Supreme Court. For those in the public who might not know, they waited out the terrible recession that came about in late 2008 and 2009. And eventually built a project that the township should be proud of. For those people who've had a chance to visit inside, it's beautiful. The units are stunning. The amenities are stunning. They're now approaching 90% occupancy. And despite some of the concerns that public had during all the discussions, there's, there's almost no schoolchildren, you know, from these, from these number of units. There's, there's almost none, which was a big concern that many people of the public had. And because the pilot was negotiated, the pilot agreement with the township was negotiated based on a percentage of revenue. Because the market is so hot, the township is actually making more off the pilot than we actually pro forma'd years ago, which many members of the public and council members at that time said were, were unrealistic expectations. So what we're talking about tonight has nothing to do with phase one. I would argue that that is a huge success. And, and this township owes a certain gratitude to Prism for, for, for sticking it out, for waiting out all the challenges. And investing, I don't know for sure, but probably $100 million, if not a little bit more into our downtown. When you factor in all the carry costs and defending that litigation and all those things. So, so if, if sometimes we, we just step back and look at some of the important things to consider. We had people come along, wait out 10 years, 15 years, and, and invested more than $100 million in our downtown and have left us with a beautiful product that is highly sought after. And people are paying in excess of $4,000 a month for the penthouses. So if you step back to the early 2000s, if you told people in this town that, that that would happen, I think people would have been pleased. So though I recognize we all have a right to have high expectations. I think it's unfortunate that so many in the, in the community still see phase one as anything less than the huge success. It is. However, what we're here to talk about tonight is what we're here to talk about tonight is is clearly what is the frustration is is phase two. Now, the early redevelopment projects all focused on three separate phases. Phase one was the battery building. Phase two was to be the Barton Press property combined with the DPW property and several other properties in the Ashland and Lakeside Avenue area. And they were broken down into kind of sub phases within phase two. And then phase three ultimately was the CVS project and some parcels on Babcock. So that was supposed to be done years ago. It was approved in the plan that it's still an approved for those in the public who might not know because it's been so long. Phase two has an approved plan. There was an approved financial agreement. There was, there was approvals and and yet despite that, we have not been able to get a project built in what is, you know, I don't think you have to stretch to think that this is probably the hottest real estate market in all of our lives. And yet despite some approvals they have, despite final approvals they have on parcels on Babcock, it just hasn't been able to get going. So when you factor that in, when you, when you factor in the frustration, the legal aspect of their failure to complete that and just the overall vision for what is approved and what we all probably agrees in the best interest of the downtown, meaning that the nearly 200 additional residential units is probably not what we want. It was, it was approved in good faith and years of public debate and open forums and, you know, 10, 15 years ago. But but we probably all agree that that's maybe not what's in our best interest and what kind of consistent with what the vision we all share for the downtown. So what we're asking the council tonight, and again, for those who watch and maybe don't always understand the process, this is first reading. So this is not binding. This simply gets us to the to the next phase of this discussion. But the administration believes with, with thanks to Prism for for phase one, we think it's time to move in a different direction on phase two. So we are having ongoing conversations with them, but we believe it's in the best interest to to turn the page, to acquire the land from them. We've already canceled the redevelopment agreement. And it's time to move in a new direction. And we'll do that collectively as a, as a governing body. And, you know, with all the input necessary from the public, but but it's time to move in a new direction. So for all those residents, and we don't get the frustration. But what I, what I find difficult to understand is how in one breath we can talk about our frustration with the lack of progress, but then say we shouldn't do this as if continuing to wait this out is all of a sudden going to change circumstances. It's, it's not, it's time to, it's time to take action and move in a new direction and and figure out what's in the best interest for the community and what ultimately is gonna be a good partner to the successful battery building in the, in the rest of the downtown. And then to even move into phase three, which was, you know, which was the back end of the project. So the council, with the council's approval, we are already underway in creating a new plan. And the council approved that resolution a couple of meetings ago to to have our planner work on the creation and the formation of a new plan. So we've already taken steps to move in that direction. This is the next step. And over these next couple of months, we'll we'll iron out a plan that's going to address this property and and come up with a better vision that we see for the downtown. So the magnitude of this is not, is not lost on me or the administration. But but when you look at the overall context of this project, its history, its sheer size and magnitude and, and what could be the a significant impact in our community, it's, it's important to take a big step. And by not taking this direction, nothing's going to happen. You know, Prism by ownership rights has, has a right to to move on this. They have a redevelopment plan and we're moving, as I mentioned, to cancel that. And but we think it's in the best interest to continue to negotiate with them without years of litigation and to buy the property, all the property in this phase two zone that's owned by Prism. This isn't all the property. When we get to the next phase, we'll, we'll, with the council president's permission, do a more detailed presentation. This is not all the property in phase two. There are other property owners that we're going to continue to negotiate with as well in hopes of buying them out. So this is, this is not, would not be the only acquisition required to take over phase two and put it in a, in a new, in a new plan and new context and a new direction. But this is the important piece because Prism owns not only the largest pieces, but they own several all tied in together within the phase two section of redevelopment. So I understand the importance of being deliberative. And the administration has worked a lot on this over the last several months. This is, this has not just come about over, over the last week or two. And we're going to continue to talk with Prism and all the entities is tied in with our redeveloper to get this deal finalized and to work with the other property owners and, and to then collectively come up with what's best for this community in finishing the redevelopment that started many years ago. But to do so within a vision that's more consistent with what is current, both from all of our sakes in terms of local leadership, but, but more importantly, maybe as the driving factor, more consistent with what can economically be viable in an ever changing market.
Mr. Mayor, thank you very much for joining us this evening. And I will echo your sentiments and I, and I think that I can say for my council colleagues as well that the depth and breadth of taking this bold, someone said it was bold. It is bold. It's a bold move to make. And we are having those conversations very carefully, very diligently. And when we're able to share more out with the public, the mayor, we all know to have pretty great PowerPoint slides that he can put together to give us a very thorough presentation. So I do thank the mayor for his courage in leading this change. It's the change that I don't know who doesn't want to see it in downtown. We all want to see that change in downtown and we have an opportunity to do that. And that's a big, bold step for this administration to have, have approached the council with. And I, quite frankly, I'm happy to be here to be part of this, this change that will be transformational for, for our community. So thank you, Mayor. Thank you, the administration and my council colleagues for their participation, support and, and, you know, brainstorming together. I really do appreciate the collaboration and look forward to the time that we can share publicly. I do want to say to the members of the public that are raising their hands, public comment period is over. I encourage you to please email any questions or concerns that you have. And I think that's all we have for you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you so much. I did want to know, is Mr. Trank still here, Mr. Trank? Mayor, the mayor reminded me when he said litigation. I would like a status update on Executive Drive. Where are we, Mr. Trank? Are you here?
Yes, I am. Thank you, Council President.
Thank you.
So there's two aspects. There's executive drive and there's the current library site. And, and we're pleased to report on both, a tremendous amount of progress has been made since the last council meeting. Specifically, on July 6th of this year, a couple of weeks ago, the appellate division affirmed the township council, the trial court and the planning board in its entirety and dismissed Mr. Malanga's lawsuit, which sought to overturn the designation of the library as an area in need of redevelopment. The appellate division specifically found that when the facade collapsed in 2015 during the winter of 2015, and then all the efforts that the township took since that point to investigate options, alternatives, and to recognize that the current footprint of the library was constrained and especially in partnership with the existing public library to look forward towards the potential site on Executive Drive that the township council, the planning board and the administration operated strictly within the law and that the project is now set to go forward. So what does that mean? What that means is we, at the last council meeting, this council approved a resolution to allow the architect who the library had recommended, and we've worked closely with Anthony Iovino. So he's starting the plans for 10 Rooney so that hopefully by early fall, those, that is obviously going to be publicly bid and will be prevailing wage. So, so that project can be bid out because that's going to be the cornerstone of Executive Drive, specifically a 25,000 square foot new library at 10 Rooney. So meanwhile, final approvals have been obtained and all time periods to appeal have passed with regard to the 425 units on Executive Drive, which will include 64 affordable and moderate income units and included two acre dog park. So what's pending there is the DEP, the Department of Environmental Protection, has to provide final permits for that project. And then the closing will occur. At the closing, 10 Rooney will be deeded to the township. And then at that point, assuming that we bid and awarded the new library, the construction will begin immediately. I would anticipate a closing will occur in the fourth quarter of this year. And hopefully, construction will be ready to begin on the library as well as Executive Drive, you know, early next year. That construction, as I think Council President, you pointed out at the last meeting, is anticipated to take seven months, will be a little conservative and say nine months, you know, you know. But the good news is that's all internal construction for the library. So we don't have to worry about too many weather events affecting the internal construction of the library. So that would put us in a position, hopefully by the fourth quarter of next year, 2022, where the library would be ready to move from its existing site. As you know, this council has approved the redevelopment agreement. And now with the appellate division dismissing with prejudice, Mr. Malanga's challenge of the redevelopment designation there, the state of New Jersey has provided Mr. Alpert, the Alpert Group, with important 9% tax credits, which will allow 62 or 63 units of senior affordable and moderate income housing to be built on the existing library site along with the community space and hopefully an auxiliary library there of about, I think it's five to 7,500 square feet on the existing library site. So that construction would likely begin in late 22 or early 2023. So all toll will end up with 124, 25 affordable and moderate income units between the two projects, two acre dog park, a new library of approximately 25,000 square feet. And critically with the libraries, again, for site, some great public space outdoor area by the library. So things are moving along. And again, I can only, one of the comments that was made in the appellate division's decision, I wanted to highlight, that they said that a part of providing equity is promote equity, education and a sense of community. And that they thought that the appellate division cited the trial court decision in saying there was substantial credible evidence that the obsolescence of the existing West Orange Public Library constituted a detriment to the public welfare in that it did not provide essential services that promote equity, education and a sense of community. And that the new project that consists of all of the components that I just articulated will achieve that result. And so we're on track, Council President, for those projects. And we're meeting every two weeks with all the stakeholders to make sure that everyone is rolling in the same direction to achieve those timelines.
Thank you, Mr. Trank. I'm happy to hear that the, the Alpert Group did not lose the 9% credit. I know that that was a concern at some point with the litigation, but so they didn't lose that, no need to reply. I'm very happy to hear that.
They may need, they may need to seek an extension from the Lieutenant Governor with our support. And obviously, it's anticipated that the township would support that if it becomes necessary. He's supposed to have those units in service in 2022. So on this timeline, it'll be 2023. But we're certainly hopeful now that the litigation is over, that all of that, just like we dealt with the grant, that all of that will be able to stay in place.
I'm also very excited that we will be able to provide affordable senior housing because it is very needed in our community. And, and, and the fact that it is at that location, I know that there's presently construction going on across for, is that the health group, what is the name of the health group that's in town now? I'm so sorry. Thank you, Zoofall. Zoofall Health will be right across the street. So certainly provides a lot of access for healthcare to our seniors in that same area. So I'm very excited about all of the progress in that. My, my last question to you, Mr. Trank or Mr. Mayor, are we, are we going to post the opinion? I think it's, it's important for the residents to read the opinion. It's a well written decision by the appellate division and certainly clears up a lot of misinformation that was, that has been circulated for quite some time. So if we could post that somewhere, that and possibly if the library or we can share it on our site, the plans that the library has for its remodeling, if you will, because they are spectacular. I look forward to when those projects begin.
Definitely.
Awesome. Councilwoman McCartney, I saw you raising.
Thank you. I just wanted to commend the legal department and the planning team on that decision.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Absolutely. All right. Thank you very much. I think it's time for us to get back to our agenda. Thank you, Mayor, for joining us. Madam Clerk.
Hey, review of the consent agenda, approval of minutes of previous meeting, June 22nd, 2021. Report of township officers, none. Reading of petitions and communications and bids, none. Bills, are there any questions on the bills?
Consent.
Okay, resolutions, Council President, are any resolutions being pulled this evening?
Yes, I am going to pull because we need to modify some language that's not correct. It is Resolution 17621, item N. I know that some of my council colleagues had resolutions that they indicated they wanted to pull. Councilman Rutherford.
Yes, so I, I, I'd like to pull, I'm sorry, I'm just going through my notes. 80, 187. I think those are the only two.
I'm sorry, Councilman, did you say 180?
Yes, 180 and 187.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Councilwoman Castellino, were there any that you were pulling or you just had questions on?
I had questions I needed for Mr. Lepore for 180 and 187. I think it's important that he explains his thought process on how he reconstructed for these two contracts. And I think you should share that with the public.
Okay, Councilman, just, Rutherford just pulled those, so absolutely, we'll discuss those. Thanks. You're welcome. Did any of my other council colleagues have resolutions, Councilwoman McCartney?
Just a question on 16721, a resolution about the payment in lieu of taxes on the St. Barnabas Realty Development. I just, I don't know the history of that and didn't know if Mr. Gross or Trank or anyone can provide that.
That is a property that we've had a pilot on. And there was a lot, some, some litigation involved on that. And this is a settlement of that litigation. My understanding, I mean, this is an improvement from where we, where we were before. It's an improvement over where we could have ended up. So the administration's firmly behind approving this agreement.
I didn't know the history of it and how that came to be. The, the tax exemption.
It's part of the, you know, the tax exemption is part of its affiliation with the hospital. There, at least that was, that was their
Administrative offices.
Their claim with that. So we think this is a, is a good settlement for this.
Yes. Yes. All right. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman McCartney. I, I did have a question mark around that one as well because I, I, obviously, we filed affirmative appeals for several years and are settling through 2025. Is that 20? I think it is 2025, yes. So from, there's going to be additional payment in lieu of taxes, pilot payments for years 2023 to 2025 of $100,000 additional per year. For the total of 386,422. And for those who are in the public listening, this is the St. Barnabas Administrative Office, St. Barnabas Realty Development, who do own property at 95 Old Short Hills Road. Did any of my council colleagues have additional questions on that? Councilwoman Williams, I see your hand. Not on that one? Okay. Okay. Councilman Rutherford on this one?
Yeah, I just want to know, what would we, if we weren't in, if we didn't have a tax appeal and if they weren't tax exempt to begin with, what would we expect to get in taxes on that property? I know we're at 386 now. Is that, I, I, I don't know if that's good or bad. I don't know where we would otherwise be.
Well, i- if, if it was deemed to be a, a hospital use and exempt, we would get nothing.
Right. But if not.
I've not done the calculation. I can get that for you as, based on what we have as assessed. Frankly, you know, I, I want to, I would need to go back to council to, to see what, from an appraised value point of view, what the actual assessment would be. I wouldn't rely on necessarily our, our, the assessments that we have in place right at this moment. But I, I'd have to get that information for you and get back to you.
Please do. Thank you.
Thank you.
Council President, I do have a question on 164.
164. Go ahead.
I, I've read the history here. I understand that the former provider of this service was a subsidiary of Greenman Peterson. I'm just curious, were they the only respondent? Were there multiple respondents?
Before.
Greenman Peterson and Keller and Kirkpatrick for the last three years have been the lowest respondent on projects of this source or this type. In this particular case, I have a lot of faith in them. I did not go and solicit any others but just this one.
So is that, is that how we typically do things? We, if, and I'm not criticizing you, I'm trying to understand. We have a relationship, you're satisfied with the service and, and we just put out, I guess, an RFQ or solicited an RFQ response from a particular vendor?
Is that? In this particular case, I'm sorry, I, I, I did that. Many times I solicit multiples. Sometimes I, I realize I think I'm wasting a lot of consultants' times when certain consultants just seem to be very geared up for this type of work. So in this particular case, I combined two years of municipal aid projects into one and solicited one, one price from one vendor.
Okay. I'm not pulling it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Councilwoman Castellino, I see your hand up.
Thank you, Council President. Mr. Lepore, just a quick question on 184-21. Just the status of the Decken Park Baseball Field Project. Has that been completed yet?
The, the actual turf is being laid this week. And as long as the weather stays good, I think all the turf will be laid by the end of the week. The infill will be placed next week. And then the final finishing touches, mostly perimeter fencing and, and electrical outlets will be installed towards the end of next week.
Okay, so the rec could start utilizing it a couple of weeks?
Yes.
Beautiful. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman Castellino. Councilwoman Williams. And, and I saw your hand go up, Mr. Trank as well.
Thank you, Council President. I just had a question regarding 163-21. Whoever is best suited to respond.
That was, that was why I was raising my hand, so I would be. So go ahead, Councilwoman Williams. Were you thinking like?
I just wanted to know, are there any buildings on that site?
So this is important because, and this was, and again, I apologize, Council President, this was the resolution that after the June meeting that was emailed around so that this Phase One, this, this deals with the negotiations, potential acquisition of the 94.55 acres of vacant land. It is vacant land, Councilwoman Williams. So this was the resolution that appropriated $7,000 that was approved electronically and is now before you for formal approval. Because in order for us to get to the next step, we hope with Crestmont, we need to do a Phase One. No one would buy property of this magnitude and of this importance without making sure there's no environmental issues. So yes, Councilwoman Williams, there is no structures on it. There is some dirt that we need to have addressed. That's been part of the discussions that are ongoing. And there are certain other tax issues that are also part of the discussions. That's why this has not been finalized. But this step in Resolution 163-21 is critical before we can go any further.
And, and so my, my follow-up question would simply be the rationale behind asking if there were any dwellings because there were some limitations as to what they would and would not test. So I, I, I have it in front of me, but I don't want to take up the council's time to review it. But there seem to be indications that they would not do soil samples. And so that was a little bit of a concern now that you've said that there may be some other issues. I, I think it basically just says if they have to do soil sampling, that would be in addition to the $7,000 fee.
You're absolutely right. And, and normally, if there's any reason that requires, exactly as you said, that would require additional analysis and allocation. Again, a Phase One, as, as, as I, as I know you know, is to find out, is there any history of any environmental issues, underground storage changes? You know, they search all the DEP websites and whatnot and evaluate all the present conditions. So we will get, I, I spoke yesterday with Matrix. And again, assuming the council formally approves this resolution, we're hoping to have something within the next two or three weeks from them.
Thank you. Councilwoman, Mr. Trank?
So, Council President, I, I know, because we spoke this morning about Resolution 176-21. And, and you clarified it because it came up earlier tonight. And you were absolutely correct that Resolution 160-21, I did adopt this resolution. So on, on, at the June 22 meeting. So really what this resolution is, is there were three Watson blocks that were not included that were added on Schedule A. So what I would propose, if it's acceptable, is that I would revise the last whereas clause rather than to incorrectly state that it was a, there was never any deliberation or anything else with regard to this resolution electronically. So I would change it to say, whereas at the June 22, 2021 council meeting, the Township Council adopted Resolution Number 160-21. Now the council is amending the adopted resolution to incorporate three additional parcels. So if that is acceptable to you and your colleagues, maybe that resolves that issue.
That does resolve that issue. I pulled it, so we'll, we'll, we'll talk to the council right after we go through the consent agenda. But yes, now it makes perfect sense since Councilwoman Williams had the question about the 163. That was the, the electronic vote. And for those, just I'll make it easy for everyone and for my council members in the event we are sent an Oprah request, that date for that email is June 23. That was the matter that was voted on electronically, not the 176. Do my council colleagues have any other questions on the, on the, on the agenda before we move on? Councilwoman Castellino, did you have a question on 170? I know we've discussed this in the past. I'm not sure if you, if you wanted to have a discussion about that at this time, or if you had questions about this resolution?
Oh wait, I thought all these resolutions were getting pulled tonight. I just, I didn't realize.
That one is not. That's why I brought it up because I know you and I discussed it.
I, I, Council President, I was just going to ask that the resolutions for the contributions for the recreation to be held to the next meeting because we haven't received all we.
Okay, great. Thank you. I know that that's a discussion Councilwoman Castellino and I have had. So Madam Clerk, so it's going to be Resolution 170-21, which is item H. And let's see where the other two.
168-21?
Yes.
Okay. And?
There's one right about.
165?
Yes.
Okay.
My apologies, Council President. I thought these were pulled and I didn't have the revised copy. So I didn't, I didn't read it on my screen.
We, we were playing phone tag all day today. It was just one of the, I think, for everyone. So I, I just wanted to make sure that I brought it to your attention before we moved on. Okay, so those, those will be pulled.
And they'll be pulled until the August 17 meeting?
Yeah. And we should, and Mr. Gross, when should we expect those statements? Thank you.
Councilwoman Williams, I, I hear you, but you're a little low.
No, no problem. I was just saying that we're pulling those from the, from the agenda and we won't be voting on those tonight.
Correct.
And the rationale is because we don't have the income statements or the, what statements are we referring to?
So, go ahead, Mr. Gross, I'm sorry.
Yeah, the, the groups that we support are required to provide annual reports. And we've asked for those reports and they've not all been received yet. So we, we're asking that the resolution should just be held one more meeting.
Have any of them been received at this point?
I, I don't know. I, I'll have to check with Mr. Keel on it. I, I asked him if they had all been received. He said, no, I did not go into detail as to what hadn't, hadn't been received.
Thank you, Mr. Gross.
Thank you, Mr. Gross. And I don't have any other questions on the agendas. So my council colleagues do not have anything further. Madam Clerk?
Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Go move.
Second.
All in favor?
I.
And any opposed? The consent agenda is implemented. Okay, so, okay, so Resolution 176-21, Resolution authorizing negotiations and appointing appraiser in connection with property acquisitions and furtherance of the downtown redevelopment plan. Council President, you pulled this.
Thank you. This was just to amend the language on the resolution, on the ninth whereas clause, where it erroneously states that this resolution was adopted electronically. So we're going to change it to read, whereas at the June 22, 2021 council meeting, the Township Council adopted resolution, adopted resolution. Do we need to include, Mr. Trank, the resolution number or just this resolution?
I was going to put resolution number, I think it's 160-21.
160 dash, yes, 160-21.
Comma, now the council is amending the adopted resolution to add certain parcels.
Thank you.
Make a motion?
Yes, motion to approve 176-21 as amended.
So move.
Councilwoman Castellino?
Yes.
Councilwoman McCartney?
Yes.
Councilman Rutherford?
Yes.
Councilwoman Williams?
Yes.
Council President Matu Brown?
Yes.
Okay. Let's see. Resolution 180-21, Resolution authorizing a professional services contract with Far Forestry Services to provide forestry services as a certified forester for private property and to designate Ronald Farr as the officer who administers the township's tree protection and removal ordinance for a fee rate of $85 per hour. Councilman Rutherford, you pulled this.
Yes, yes. Thank you, Council President. So, or clerk. So I have a, I'm having a difficult time understanding why we need to have two foresters. You know, I, I pulled both of these, 180 and 187. We, I'll, I'll get to 187 when we get to it, but I don't understand why we need two. And I, I certainly don't want to have two. And so I, I think we need to have one forester and, and I'm happy to have Mr. Farr as the forester, but I, I don't want to vote to have two. So I think we need to redo that. I'm happy to hear from my council colleagues what their thoughts are on two foresters.
Could, could we have Mr. Lepore, since we do have him on, to answer your, your question as to the rationale?
Good, good evening again, everybody. My, my concern with transitioning to different foresters or forester is that the, the scope of work performed by the forester is, is a lot broader than it was 30 plus years ago when, when we had our first tree removal ordinance. I, I have a concern, not over necessarily Mr. Farr's abilities, but I have a concern with Mr. Farr walking into this position and taking over all aspects of, of the forester's duties. Whether that includes, as here, with administering the tree protection and removal ordinance, meeting with residents about concerns that they may have with trees on their own property, perhaps meeting with residents about trees on neighboring property, as well as working with our, our property maintenance division as far as including their codes and working with that, that, that division, which can sometimes lead to warnings and eventually perhaps summonses and court appearances. The number of permits that we are now issuing just this year is significantly more than it's been for similar times in previous years. I think there was a tremendous effort made by everybody to strengthen our tree removal ordinance. And I think we're seeing that by the number of people who are making sure that they comply with the ordinance. There had been some summonses that have been issued by Mr. Linson for tree removal without permits at 110 Terrace Avenue, as well as another address on Undercliff Terrace South. I can't remember the specific address. I think that word is getting around. People are calling, people are bringing in applications. They're, they want to comply and tree companies are also registering as required by the ordinance. So one of the concerns I have is this is going to be a tremendous undertaking for one person, plus some of the other responsibilities that Public Works puts on them. Thus, it was my decision, at least at this point, to just split the, the services up to those that are on private property. And again, the thought behind that was when you start dealing with a private property owner, you can quickly introduce that person to the tree removal permitting process. So that you have the permit being issued or an application given to them so that they can follow that procedure and not be surprised by it. So again, my biggest concern is this is a lot for one person to take over at, at this particular time.
Is, is Mr. Linson handling those responsibilities now?
Mr. Linson is handling those responsibilities now, all, all those responsibilities.
Yeah, so I, I would, you know, I would, I'm not in favor of, of splitting it. I don't, I think if Mr. Linson is handling those responsibilities now, I recognize there may be an increase, at least initially as we've strengthened the ordinance. I expect that over time that will settle down as the, as the rush to comply kind of subsides. So I, I don't want to make a long-term decision for a short, for what, you know, could very well be a short-term problem.
Well, what, what I would say is we're, it's not a long-term decision. This, this expires the end of this year. This is only for barely a five and a half month period. Um, one of the things that I think has been a little difficult, um, not just in this case for a professional service, but some of the others is, um, uh, I'll need to work, uh, with our purchasing agent, um, our new purchasing agent or acting purchasing agent this fall. I'd like to be able to get back to you in December or at the latest, your January meeting with what, uh, my recommendation is for professional services for 2022. So this tonight that's before you is strictly for the last five and a half months of this year only.
If we approve, uh, Mr. Farr and, and, and do not approve, uh, Mr. Linson, would Mr. Farr then be responsible for all of Mr. Linson's, uh, responsibilities as well?
Um, I would, I would certainly want to come back to you, uh, formally, uh, indicate that he would be uh, the person responsible for those services because the RFQ, uh, was issued for two distinct services. And, um, uh, what's before you tonight is for Mr. Farr to handle the, the services on, on private property alone.
Got it. I'll yield to my, uh, council colleagues.
I just looked up and I saw all these hands. Uh, Councilwoman McCartney? You're welcome.
Well, Mr. Lepore, can you talk about, um, how this particular contract on the private properties will help the zoning department because our forester was handling that above and beyond his call of duty? Uh, these are both, one, I, I'm going to make the assumption that these are both one-day contracts, one day a week. Uh, Mr. Linson was performing duties above and beyond that to help out with property maintenance. And this seems to be a way to resolve that.
Well, I, I already, um, again, I've spoken to Mr. Farr. Um, I expect him, uh, to be in the, uh, in, in, in town, uh, at least two half-days a week. Uh, I didn't necessarily want him squeezing all his time into one day. I, I want him to have a presence on more days during the week. Uh, I think that's important. Um, it's not, um, always, it's not a good policy, uh, to, uh, talk to our constituents and say, well, you're going to have to wait till next Monday. On a Monday, uh, afternoon or Tuesday, I'm looking for Mr. Farr to be here, uh, 8:30 to 12:30 both Monday and Wednesday. Now, that doesn't mean he's limited to those hours on those days because it's going to a lot depend on, on the workload. But I want him to at least be here one day a week and I would expect Mr. Linson to be here approximately four hours, uh, on a Friday. If you go back and look at some of the, the tasks that I described, um, certainly one of those tasks uh, were for, um, in this case, it would be Mr. Farr, uh, to consult with property maintenance inspectors on conditions of trees on private property. Uh, he'll also determine if trees are dead or hazardous and if removal or pruning is warranted. Uh, that, uh, consultant will also issue writ notice to property owners. He'll issue summonses if they fail to comply with notices and, uh, based on the summonses, then be required to appear in court.
That would definitely help the zoning department. Thank you very much, Mr. Lepore. Oh, I, I know my other question was about, um, office space.
What, what I had indicated in the RFQ is that, uh, we would provide an office space. Uh, there would be a telephone because there is a listing for, for a forester. So they will have a, a town line that they can, um, retrieve voice messages, return calls and would also, uh, have them have internet access, but not, uh, internet access with a, a computer owned by the town. They'd have to bring their own, uh, laptop or, or, or tablet and have access to our wifi.
Do we have to specify in this resolution what you just said about the two days or two half-days?
Um, I think that if the council so chooses, uh, that it can be put in so that clearly then everybody has an expectation of when they could anticipate, uh, the forester to be here.
Not necessarily the specific days, but at least the eight hours.
You, you can do that. I, I don't mind putting specific days because i- if we don't put them here, they're going to be specific somewhere else. So, uh, particularly on the, on our website so that the public knows when, when they can reach him, when he's in the office.
I would make a recommendation to add that to this resolution.
Okay.
The resolutions.
I, I think that that's appropriate under the circumstances.
Thank you, Mr. Lepore.
Thank you, Mr. Lepore. Um, Councilwoman, uh, Castellino and then Williams. Councilwoman Castellino?
I, I'll defer to Councilwoman Williams. She had her hand up first, so I don't want to jump in.
Go for it. Councilwoman Williams?
Thank you, Council President.
You're welcome.
A couple of, of questions, statements, concerns, um, with the division of responsibility. So, um, we just talked about office space and being provided to the forester. So I wanted to know if that office space would be shared uh, between the two foresters?
Um, yeah, it, it's, I, I hate to call it office space. It's a, it's a large room that, uh, a, a couple of us already share. So, uh, it, it's not, uh, that there's specific office. It, it's a working area. It's a desk with a, with a phone.
Thank you. And then my, my second, I guess, commentary statement would be, I think, more so than anything else, and, and of course, this is just my personal opinion, but I would suggest that the increase in activity would simply be to the ordinance change where previously you were able to remove three trees without any notification to the, to the township. Um, we just modified that ordinance, um, last year and now any type of tree removal has to be noticed to the municipality. So I think that's a direct result, um, of us changing the ordinance requirements and so that residents are complying. I, I think we've done, um, a, a good job in making sure we communicate that ordinance change to the public. And, you know, i- it's my opinion that overall residents want to be complicit. So you, they're doing what we've asked them to do just based on the ordinance change, not necessarily um, an increase in, in, in tree activity, but more so an increase in requirements and responsibility. And then my other question, um, would be simply for Mr. Farr, what has been his previous experience in other municipalities? And secondly, um, do most other municipalities in, in similar size, uh, to West Orange also have more than one forester?
Um, I, I'm not aware of, of somebody that would have more, more than, than one forester. Um, certainly I, I could have, and I should have included, uh, all, all their resumes or both resumes. Uh, Mr. Farr is, is amply qualified, uh, to serve in, in this capacity. For a number of years, he, uh, worked full-time for the North Jersey Water District. He actually still works part-time for them. He has represented other communities, uh, as well as private clients. Um, I, I have no doubt that, uh, he is fully capable of, uh, of administering our ordinance, uh, meeting with our residents, uh, helping residents, uh, make decisions about trees on their property and being a tremendous asset to, uh, working with, uh, our property maintenance division.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman Williams. Um, Councilman Rutherford, I see your hand up again.
Uh, I think Councilwoman Castellino, uh, is waiting, but.
I don't know. She's going to defer to you, so I just jumped right to you.
That's okay. I can wait.
But I, I'll be brief. Um, thank you, um, both of you. Um, so if I hear you correctly, Mr. Lepore, uh, Mr. Farr is, um, capable of handling all of the responsibilities of a forester in town. Is that right?
Yes, that's right.
Uh, my second question is, is this split of responsibility, uh, does it have anything to do with the dozens of email complaints we've received regarding Mr. Linson?
Um, certainly, um, I'm sensitive to the fact that, um, there are those who are not, um, uh, satisfied with the way he's conducted a business in the town, uh, particularly with, uh, respect to, um, enforcing in our tree protection ordinance as well as the removal of, of trees within, uh, public's, uh, street rights of life. So part of this is in response to looking at, um, having somebody to replace Mr. Linson, but I'm not dissatisfied with Mr. Linson's work. But what I, what I really, uh, believe is that for one person to step in right now and take over all the responsibilities is going to be difficult for that person. From me personally, I would say I'd rather deal with one person. But I think at this point, if I were to deal with one person, that's going to be, uh, difficult for, for both of us if one person is taking over all aspects of, of, um, forestry services.
Fully noted. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilwoman Castellino?
Okay, tha- thank you, thank you, Mr. Lepore. Um, so just, uh, looking over the schedule. So Mr. Farr would give us two days a week, correct?
He's going to give us at least two half-days a week.
Two half-days, okay.
I expect certainly initially that that could be anywhere from, uh, one to two days. Because again, I think just the, the volume of some of the recent activity, particularly with respect, uh, to the new requirements.
Yeah, you say days, is that eight-hour days?
Uh, what, what I was saying is I expect him to put in, I, I, I already discussed with him being here, two half-days minimum per week, Monday and Wednesday, 8:30 to 12:30.
Okay.
If the job warrants it, and I do expect at least initially for that to be the case, I, I do believe he'll be here additional hours both days, certainly at least one day.
And what do you anticipate Mr. Linson's time to be?
Um, at, at most, uh, a half a day on, on a Friday.
Half-day Friday, so no more Wednesdays.
Correct. And part of this is, um, while I'm, I'm not trying to cross, uh, the responsibilities, but if a certain, you know, at least now I could draw upon three days a week having a professional here.
Sure.
Not saying that that's going to go beyond the end of December, but at least for the next five and a half months, that's the way I, I envision.
Well, that was my next question. So you can interchange either one of them i- uh, if you need, need be.
Yeah, and I'm not.
Three days a week coverage.
Yeah, and I'm not saying I want to get Mr. Linson involved with, uh, the issuance of permits, but if there happened to be a violation, I think he could certainly at least respond to, to a problem.
And how many hours currently has Mr. Linson been providing us?
He's been generally providing us about 16 hours a week. He's usually here for eight hours on a Wednesday and a Friday. Let's not say it's that way every week, but it's about.
Okay. And we're able to, you're going to reevaluate this come December?
Well, I think before December, there's, there's going to be another RFQ issue so that we're, we're into the 2022 year and still trying to debate our, our forestry services.
And last question, even though we're not on the, if, if Councilman Rutherford doesn't mind me asking this question for 186, why the increase of $10 an hour?
Um, that's, um, I, I didn't necessarily ask that of Mr. Linson. Um, I asked him, would he consider, um, holding his rate? He indicated he did not. He, um, basically stated he has been at $85 for, um, pretty much the whole time he's been here and he thought an additional i- increase was warranted.
Thank you, Mr. Lepore.
Mr. Lepore, thank you, uh, Councilwoman Castellino. Um, Councilman Rutherford, your hand remained up from the last time you did, just put out, right?
No, well, just, just want to say, so we're, we're looking at approximately 16 hours from Mr. Linson and approximately eight hours from Mr. Farr. I mean, well, Mr. Linson was prior 16 hours and now we're looking at eight hours from Mr. Farr and eight hours from Mr. Linson. So we're still at 16 hours worth of work per week on average. Is that, is that right?
Now, I, I'm, I'm looking at potentially eight to 16 hours for Mr. Farr and only four for Mr. Linson.
Okay, so we're at, we're on average looking to increase the number of hours that we need the forester by about four hours per week?
If, if, yes, it could, could be that. And we think a lot has to do with, uh, the change to the ordinance. And I think a little, some of it may have to do with, um, Ms. Mr. Farr, um, getting, uh, working up the learning curve. Uh, certainly, um, we're all here to help, to assist Mr. Farr in doing his job. Uh, Mr. Linson has, uh, indicated, uh, you know, if Mr. Farr has any questions, he's certainly capable of, of, or be available to answer them. So not, not looking to add a lot of hours, but looking to try to come up with the right number of hours that makes sense uh, on average from week to week.
Yeah.
And, and if you want, you could, the council as a whole can, you know, limit the hours and I will so, so advise the consultant.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
To be a problem, I'll, I'll, I'll get back, get back to the council on that.
Well, I, I, I can just speak from the legal department's perspective. I do not think it's a good idea to limit the hours, but I think that's been the hardest issue is that issues arise and we need to have somebody available who can respond. So I think the.
President, I, I'd like to, I hate to chime in, Council President, but I just want to kind of echo what Mr. Trank and Mr. Lepore are saying. We obviously defer the council on all these matters, so we'll trust the council will do what they think is right, but, but, but we do not think you should limit the hours. I can tell you, the administration gets a lot of calls, a lot of requests, and to Mr. Trank's point, a lot of emergent situations and limiting the hours of foresters is not going to help, uh, help address what is a growing concern and something that is, uh, demanding a lot more attention than it has in the past.
Thank you. Um, Councilwoman, uh, Cat, uh, Williams, I'm sorry.
Thank you, Council President. I just have a couple more questions if I may. Um, wanted to understand if Mr. Farr would have the capacity or do we know, um, whether or not he would have the capacity if we do need more time from him? And then, um, also wanted, um, some type of response if we were not to approve, um, the wage increase for Mr. Linson. Um, would he still be willing to continue at his current rate?
Okay, M- Mr. Farr is, is available Monday, Tuesday and Wednesdays. He has, uh, commitments on, on Thursday and Friday. So yes, Mr. Farr can work into the afternoons on a Monday, can work into the afternoons on a Wednesday. And if he needed to be here on a Tuesday, he could be here on, on Tuesdays also. Um, I can certainly ask Mr. Linson again if, if the council were to so, uh, decide that, uh, they were willing to extend his contract at $85. Um, I know he did not, uh, think favorably upon that when I discussed that with him today, but, um, that doesn't mean, uh, I can't try again and we're, and we won't reconsider.
I, I certainly have not had this conversation with any of my council colleagues, um, but I, I think, um, at that point, I, I would like to make a motion to table. Um, I know we're only talking about one ordinance at this point, so procedurally, Mr. Trank, if you could tell me whether or not this is appropriate at this time or if we just need to deal with the ordinance under discussion currently?
So again, if, if a, a motion to table a specific resolution, um, takes precedent and so obviously, um, any council person can make that motion and if a majority of the council agrees, then it will be tabled to the next meeting.
So I, I would like to table the, the, the resolution to increase the salary. Um, I think that's, uh, Resolution number 187 dash 21.
Again.
So go ahead.
Uh, again, i- i- I, I, Councilwoman Williams, I, wouldn't it better, uh, to be up to amend it, to reduce it by the $10? That allows Mr. Lepore to, uh, go back to him and say, there will no approval for the five and a half months, but at the $85 an hour. Again, uh, the, the. but at the eighty-five hours an hour. Again, uh the the legal department does share the concern that we have active cases uh that are going uh with Mr. Linson where he is my prosecuting witness, uh and those trials are upgo- uh uh upcoming. So um while I share a lot of the frustrations of, because I'm the one prosecuting him as to these cases, I certainly am trying to set a strong example of um not allowing some of these contractors who have been coming into town and not following the rules. So if if your concern is at ten dollars, I would suggest a an amendment to that resolution to reduce his uh to to the eighty-five hours an hour, which is the existing rate.
Certainly, I will take that under advisement and do whatever you suggest is best for the township.
And can I, um, I'm sorry, um, I I would like to, we started on resolution one-eighty, and we did not um conduct, close that um resolution. So before we make an amendment to one-eighty-seven, um we we need to finish one-eighty first. I know they're they're kinda in tandem, but they're separate resolutions. And I.
Frank advised that any type of amendment, is it just an amendment, or is it simply tabling?
Tabling, tabling takes precedent, but I think the counts, I we can, I think, you know, logistically, it probably makes sense to resolve one-eighty dash twenty-one first, and then we can do whatever you please with one-eighty-seven. Again, it's up to the council.
I I I I do wanna go through uh and finish one-eighty since Councilman Rutherford pulled it. If um he doesn't have any other questions, or my council colleagues don't have any other questions, I do have a question for uh Mr. Lapore on one-eighty for Mr. Farr's contract. Is there a not-to-exceed dollar amount um for the time uh between July and December?
Um, there there is is not put, one is not put in here. I think getting back to to a prior question about whether we limit his hours, you could limit his hours, then by default that limits the amount, but I think you heard some of the problems of of limiting his hours. So I I think there's also some budgetary constraints uh that I would, or or perhaps John uh Gross could uh indicate whether, you know, that I I don't think this is unlimited, but I think we would have to discuss, though, what what the maximum could be uh for the next five-and-a-half months.
I I I'll I'll just add that um while there's no official limitation within the the resolution, um functionally, uh we limit such resolutions uh based on our 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 budgetary estimates. Uh, we do review them as it moves moves along, and if we for if the demand increases to a point where we need to go beyond what what I might approve initially, we do that. Um, but it is monitored in order to do that. So um the there are there are constraints that we place on resolutions such as these. Uh, keep it in mind that, uh, you know, it it is a, it is a moving demand, um, so.
I I thank you for that. I I do wanna just express to my council colleagues where I am on this. Obviously, I received the same number of complaints and emails that that you all have. And completely understand the frustration of our residents as well. But I also want to defer to those who are in the trenches, boots on the ground, i.e. Mr. Lapore, who I, looking from the perspective of saying, okay, let's give him somebody completely new, and him having the responsibility of not just enforcement of tree ordinances and so much else that's going on with with our departments. I I am, I am okay to defer on this to um Mr. Lapore. I think that he has taken the time to um listen and address the concerns that the residents have had, those that we have had, and is finding a solution for it. I I am um happy to see that this isn't a full year, um but it is five months and we can revisit it then. But I'd also like to remind my council colleagues of all of the developments that are um are on the horizon that are going to require a lot more attention and limiting um you know, Mister and tying our zoning department's hands, tying our our engineers' hands by um by either tabling or um, you know, doing an amendment. I think it's going to really just cause even greater disruption to both the department. So uh my position is, I'm I'm okay, I'll continue to have the discussion for one-eighty-seven, but as far as one-eighty is concerned, I'm 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 supportive of Mr. Farr um eighteen to sixteen hours um at the rate of eighty-five dollars, and um I I am going to support that resolution. I I see everyone's hand up, and I didn't see who was up first, so I'm going to go with my, where I see the first one on the left corner, and that's uh Councilwoman McCartney.
All right, thank you.
You're welcome.
I I, Council President, I wanted to say that I think that the comment that you just made and listening to John Gross's comments, that it should be in here to say not to exceed whatever that amount that John is saying, because I think I am not in support of tabling the other resolution, because I think that's why we are here in the first place, because Mr. Linson put in a lot of additional hours based on the amount of work that we are in the process of discussing right now and talking about hiring someone else to do some of this work, where Mr. Linson was doing it on his own. So I'm not in favor of tabling it, but I do think that we should put something that says, do not exceed a certain amount so that they know that there is a cap there.
Thank you, Councilwoman McCartney. Councilwoman Castellino?
Thank you, Council President. Uh I'm not sure if the mayor is still on the call. Yes, okay, first to mayor. So um a lot of these calls and having a lot of conversations with uh Mr. Lapore uh were property maintenance related. I know with the loss for our newer colleagues of Mike Granduski, who was in the zoning or property maintenance office, he had covered, um he had experiences, uh plenty of experience to go out on these tree calls, and he was a great loss to a a property maintenance department. Um, so I was just wondering, I I know uh, I know we are having a new hire uh in that department for another property maintenance inspector. Will that person, and anyone in the department that we're training? I know uh Mr. Depasqua, I think, went on is what goes on a lot of calls with Mr. Linson. So I just was wondering if we could fill that gap a little bit um with uh with being able to send out someone, uh one of the inspectors on some of these calls. That's, that was my first question, and just my second comment is um as frustrated as I am to kinda have to, you know, we asked Mr. Lapore to go out and revisit this and try to do this a different way. This is what he came back to us with. I know members of the public aren't gonna be happy with it. I'm not totally happy with it. Um, however, I know the department has to function, and it is five-and-a-half months, so I I am willing to um look at this and and see what happens at the end of the year. Um, but again, going back to the mayors or any way, that property maintenance could fill in that that void for some of these hours for um, you know, some of these uh trees that fall down in the township.
Yeah, yeah, so just one comment first, Councilwoman. Mr. Lapore, you you came up with this scenario as a response to some of the council members' concerns and the public's concerns, but a- and he kinda alluded to it. I I want, I don't want the council to assume that the administration has been unhappy with Mr. Linson.
Yeah.
Certainly, um, some public members, you know, aren't happy with them, and cancelly, a lot of public members aren't happy with us, so um we've tried to be responsive of that, but I think Mr. Linson has done a good job in 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 what probably, if we look back with the benefit of hindsight, was a contract that was doomed to fail. He was here one day a week, and we extended it two days a week, but it's probably a job that's, you know, growing to the point where it's almost full-time. So um I I think he he was responsive to the administration's concerns and and helped us fulfill a lot of our expectations, and um we were trying to be respectful to the council's concerns and the public's concerns, but I I just don't want everyone leaving this meeting thinking, you know, the administration is completely unhappy with Mr. Linson, because we're not. Now that said, um, all departments, especially when it comes to inspecting, um works cooperatively, whether it's the fire inspectors, the zoning, or or in this case, the forester. So there's always gonna be a collaboration, but I think as good as some of the inspectors, or all the inspectors really, um in in our zoning office, they don't have the expertise um of of trees. So I I don't think they're ever gonna be able to replace a a forester, or in this case, Mr. Linson, um simply because they don't have that expertise, but um, but but they do, you know, they do assist in a lot of those issues when it comes to property maintenance. And as to your point, Lou does go out with on a lot of calls with Mr. Linson now, and will always do that regardless of of who might be in that role as forester. But I don't know that they're ever gonna be able to replace some of the responsibility, simply because they don't have the expertise of knowing trees, knowing what's an issue, what's disease, what's what's not a desirable tree, what's damaged, and and all the other things that might come along with those requirements.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor.
Um, Mr. Gross, you have your hand up.
Yeah, I just wanted uh just to uh make, go back and remake the point. Council, Councilwoman McCartney had suggested that perhaps uh that I suggested that we that that some limitations be put on there on the the resolution financially, and that wasn't what I had indicated. So if I if I led you in that direction, I apologize. What I was saying was, we internally do that as a matter of course, and that and that that we we gauge that based on the conditions of our budget overall and the amount of money that we anticipate spending on different services. So I would ask that you allow us to continue to do that, uh, because as Mr. Trank said, um, the the day demands really warrant that for us to be able to, if we need to actually use more, not to not to have an artificial constraint of people, you know, responding when when we need to. So um I I just wanted to mention that. Thank you.
Thank you, uh, Mr. Gross. Um, Councilman Rutherford, I see your hand up as well.
Thank you, Council President. So I I I understand the need for um a runway for Mr. Farr to get up to speed and learn some of the um, I guess, the institutional knowledge or the departmental knowledge uh with regard to that role, and and certainly don't want to put him at a disadvantage as he assumes this role. Certainly don't wanna put Mr. Lapore at a disadvantage either, as he tries to manage this among many other responsibilities. So I am supportive of Mr. Farr and uh, you know, resolution one-eighty. I I do think that we are um repri- we are elected to represent the will of the people. Uh, and I have not, um, I, the 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 response that I have received with some of these complaints is just so overwhelming in one regard, that I have to take that into consideration, and I have to act on that. Um, and whether I like it or not is a whole nother story, and and I'm not even said whether I like it or not. So so, you know, with regard to one-eighty, I am, I am supportive. I want my colleagues to understand that. Uh, with regard to one-eighty-seven, you know, we'll have that conversation when that one comes up next. Uh, but certainly I am supportive of one-eighty. I understand that he's gonna need some leeway as he gets up to speed. Uh, I I'm not trying to limit his hours, or or I I understand that it may take a little bit more time early on as he learns the the role. Uh, but for one-eighty, I am supportive, and I'm happy to discuss one-eighty-seven at the appropriate time. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Rutherford. Councilwoman Williams, you put your hand down. Okay, um, Madam Clerk?
Okay, is there a motion to approve one-eighty dash twenty-one, I believe, as amended?
Second.
There's no amendment.
There is no amendment.
Oh, I thought, I thought there was.
One-eighty-seven may have an amendment.
They have, no.
Okay, so is there a motion to approve one-eighty dash twenty-one?
So moved.
Okay, Councilwoman Castellino?
Yes.
Councilwoman McCartney? Councilman Rutherford?
Yes.
Councilwoman Williams?
Yes.
Council President Matute Brown?
Yes.
Okay, uh, one-eighty-seven dash twenty-one, resolution authorizing a professional services contract with the shade tree department, John Lit- Linson, to provide forestry services as a certified forester, licensed tree expert, and arboricultural approved arborist for public rights of way and public property for a fee rate of ninety-five dollars per hour. Councilman Rutherford, you pull this.
Uh, thank you, uh, uh, Ms. Carnaval. I am not supportive of this for the reasons I just stated a moment ago. Um, we are elected to represent the will of the people. The will of the people, as I have heard it, um, is not in support of this particular resolution. Uh, I also am not in support of either a ninety, uh, a ten-dollar-an-hour uh bump in pay. Um, and I think if we are going to have um Mr. Mr. Linson around uh for any period of time, it should be done uh with an eye toward phasing him out and ramping uh Mr. Farr up. The 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 complaints have just been overwhelming, um, and we have to take that into consideration. And I recognize people complain about me too, uh, to the mayor's point a moment ago. I get it. I know that that's just a part, it comes with the job. I get it. Um, and I do expect that if the the complaints about me continue to rise, I won't be elected, right? Um, and but that's the same kind of process I think we need to to approach here uh with regard to Mr. Linson. So I am not in favor of of, I'm not going to support one-eighty-seven. I don't think we should support it, um unless there are some um clear constraints on uh both the amount of time um and the responsibilities with regard to him uh kinda transferring or offloading uh the responsibilities he currently has, and he being Mr. Linson, to Mr. Farr. Thank you.
Thank you, um, Councilman Rutherford. I I wanna um address a- address what you what you said um during the previous resolution as well as just now. I I appreciate that and completely understand. We are elected to represent the will of the people, and I, like you, have received the same complaints as I just stated. But in those complaints, I also realize that some of the the expectations, um, I am not a forester, but I have had the experience in the short time that I've been an elected official to actually go with Mr. Linson, go with Mr. Lapore to respond to residents who have called because they have an objection on it a- about taking down a tree. Old Indian Road, for instance, when there was some work that needed to be done there. Um, and I know that the residents did not, that the ones that live there did not want the uh road to be repaired. They liked people not going on their road, but it was necessary for many reasons. And there was a tree that was slated to be taken down. It wasn't just haphazardly taken down. They listened, they went out, and even offered um for the resident, the property owner, to get their own professional opinion, and if the opinion was different than that of our forester, then the township would would um abide by that. Um, I I've seen the responsiveness. I've also heard some of the complaints that that we've received, and the solution to roadwork um as the need to remove trees is sometimes inevitable, simply because of the the length of the tree roots, um, the damage to the infrastructure that it could, uh, it's threatening to cause or has caused. Um, some of the 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 recommendations or the suggestions have been, they should not use equipment, but do it by hand. And I am just aghast at the thought of anyone recommending that any employee chisel out tar and a sidewalk and do it by hand. I say that to say that, yes, I am elected to represent the will of the people, and I do. But there are many decisions that I've made, including the one that we're gonna make tonight, or we did with the resolution of the thirteen mi- well, we will, hopefully, a little later on this evening, that there are people that are objecting to that. I understand, I listen, I respect, but at the end of the day, I've had the personal experience of of knowing that they do go out and 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 work with the residents. Um, and also understanding that there is sometimes trees that Um, and also understanding that there is sometimes trees that unfortunately, because of road work that has to be done, are sacrificed in the meantime. But we do have replacement programs as well. So my my support in in um, and I did not start supporting um miss this this um contract renewal. Um, Councilwoman Castellino and I have had many conversations. Council uh Woman McCartney and I have had many conversations. But I do realize, again, going into the time and space that we're in with developments and all of the permits that are are that that are being required and the um institutional knowledge that uh Mr. Laporte has and just the bandwidth that the entire department has, I am not willing to handicap them at this time. I am happy to say that I believe the administration has listened to the people. They are not providing um uh travel expense, which unfortunately, that was something that was an oversight for years. Thankfully, our our residents caught that, and that's no longer in here. Um, you know, the the use of the uh the clerical staff is no longer in here. So I I my my perspective on this is that we are we are listening, the administration has listened, and if there comes a time down the road in six months that they feel that Mr. Farr is, you know, well-equipped um and has the bandwidth to continue the work, then then we can revisit it at that time. But my position on this is that I I'm not happy with the $10 increase, but I realize that he's also only here half a half a day on Friday. And so um I am going to support this resolution because I think it's it's um just in the timing, and we'll see what happens in a couple of months. But the 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 reality of him uh of of this consultant not having access to secretarial clerical and reimbursement for mileage, to me, I feel is a medium ground in listening to the residents and and trying to find um, you know, a way to support the departments. So that's where I am. I saw your hand go back up, Ms. uh Councilman, but um Councilwoman McCartney had her hand up, and then I'll call on you. Councilwoman McCartney.
I lowered my hand instead of unmuted. Um, I wanted to say how much I appreciated the mayor's respectful comments uh regarding John Linson because that has been my experience years on the planning board with reports he has submitted and as a member of the West Orange Environmental Commission for the past eight, I don't know, 10 years, eight years, I'm not sure. So I do. And and Councilwoman, the point that you, Council President, the point that you just brought up about that tree on Old Indian, they were not happy, the people that have been complaining uh were not happy about the decision that John had made, did get a second opinion, and it was the same decision. So I really appreciate you bringing up uh that. And just today, I know that there was a conversation with the resident on Luddington. Lenny went out and uh John has been there too. There are some residents that don't want trees replaced. I I, you know, so many are ha find that so hard to believe, but there are a number of residents that don't want trees replaced, and John gets blamed for that. So uh we are also looking at, we just heard that John had put Mr. Linson had put in additional hours of up to 16 hours by coming in that extra day, and now he's down to four. So I too am in favor of supporting this resolution. As you just said, we took away the clerical, took away the mileage, and he'll have to do that on his own. So, thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman McCartney. Council Councilman Rutherford.
Uh, thank you, Council President. I think the fact that we're taking away the the mileage, uh the 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 reimbursement for his mileage, as well as the support staff that he's had, um, points to the fact that the initial RFQ um was not done properly. Uh, it seems to me that if if those perks had been uh put into the initial RFQ, we probably would have gotten a different response from other foresters. And now that it has been that way for so long, um, and it's been pointed out by multiple residents, and we've made that correction, I don't think that that goes far enough. I think if we're, i i Mr. Linson certainly has an advantage over everybody after having done it for so long, the relationships he's built within the administration and the knowledge he has of the town. That's uh it's it, there's no way to debate that. Uh, but he got that that advantage unfairly. Um, he had perks that were provided to him that were not disclosed in the original RFQ, as far as I'm aware, and and that, I think, pre uh presented an unfair advantage for him. I think while we may be correcting that now, the advantage is already built in. So, you know, I'm not for it. I I may be the lone uh uh dissenting voice. Um, but, yeah, I I I think when you have this level, this chorus of outcry uh with regard to any particular issue, it has to be uh listened to. Um, I don't think it's impossible to find another forester who can do the the same job. I think uh knowledge of the 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 trees and and whether they're healthy or not, and when they need to be pruned, or or how to take them down, if they need to be taken down, is something that foresters in general will have, uh especially if they have any level of experience on the job. Um, and so it's not like we can't find another forester who knows how to do the job. Uh, but I think to correct the unfair advantage that Mr. Linson has had for so long, uh, I I think what we're doing now is just a mod a minor step in that direction. I think we can be better. Thank you.
Thank you, um, Councilman Rutherford. And I I just want to correct something that you said, and 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 I appreciate you say as far as you know. Um, in reading the bids that went out, the RFQs that went out years ago, because we've all received the same Oprah responses, and we've read them all, and in the initial RFQ, this wasn't put in there, but when 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 a a a consultant or whoever responds to these RFPs, they respond and they complete their um application. And 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 it's not a defense, it's just a fact. In Mr. Linson's um RFQ um proposal, he did, in fact, include mileage, travel. Somehow that did not translate from where we received, well, I was on on the council at the time, but at the time when the council uh was presented with the resolution, I'm going to chalk it up to being an oversight, because while it wasn't on the in the RFQ, it wasn't his response to that. And and somewhere along the way, um, perhaps because there's not, um, I don't think that everyone in Town Hall, and I've said this before, you know, the doing more with less is is sometimes challenging, and I think that that's what happened in this case, and, you know, that was missed. So I I it's not that he was intentionally given an unfair advantage, so I don't want to paint him in a negative light, and I won't, um, because I don't think that that's fair. But he did put it in his RF in his response. Unfortunately, it looked like it was missed. When when we receive the resolutions and recommendations from Mr. Laporte, typically there is an attached exhibit with all of the responses that we've that he's received um to justify um his recommendation, which I appreciate. I don't know how thoroughly everyone reads those. I I comb through um everything I have because I never want to miss something. And then it come back to me and say, oh, well, you voted for this, and this was in that that language was included. But in this case, I just want to be clear that if you look at the uh the response to the RFP or RFQ at the time, that was always what he included. Um, I think it was just a um so it was something that was missed by 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 our township.
But whether or not he included it in his response, it was not listed as a perk so that all of the respondents would know what they were getting and giving in response to that RFQ. So if one person says, hey, I'm going to do A, B, and C, and D, but D is not included in the RFQ, and none of the other respondents knew that D would be included, then they can't properly price their service because they don't know they're getting a secretary and a desk and email and all of the and mileage and whatever the other perks were. So, yes, he may have included it in his response. The other respondents did not know that those were things that could be offered or that they would be that they would receive if they were awarded the contract. And had they known that, they may have given a different uh response. So that 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 part does not change. We did not put that in the RFQ, even though Mr. Linson may have put it in his response. Thank you.
I just I just want to say that it it just sounds accusatory as if it's malicious on the intent or a malicious intent to deceive. That's what it sounds like to me. What I'm trying to clear up to you, that I don't believe that it was anything other than an error, a an administrative error, error in in receiving these RFQs and putting together a resolution. That's my
Not a scientific motive. I'm not saying that there was a nefarious motive. That's not what I'm saying. The RFQ went out the way it went out. It was responded to by multiple respondents. Mr. Linson included in his response some things that were not in the RFQ, and he was awarded the RF, he was awarded the contract. That I'm not saying that that was done deliberately. I'm not saying there was a conversation to uh deliberately keep it out of the RFQ. All I'm saying is, it's still a dis it's still a disadvantage to those that did not um have that knowledge when they made their response, and an advantage to Mr. Linson, certainly now over the years, um, that he did have that, that this is not to assign blame um or to say that there's some kind of a a handshake deal or something uh to that effect. Um, I'm not trying to say that, and I don't want Mr. Linson or Mr. Laporte or the mayor or Jack or anyone else to think that that's my accusation. That's not what I'm saying. But the RFQ did not include that those perks would be given.
Mr. Trank.
Well, it's it's just not an accurate way to depict it, because Council President, you're absolutely right. When an RFP is put out, the professionals in this case, and again, there are not lines of foresters who've been lining up. So, and this has been year after year. So the Council President is correct. The respondents put in their submissions. They're not confined in the way they put in the submissions. We don't say, it's not like a bid where you give them technical requirements to bid uh to build a uh a park or or a roadway where you say these specifications, you let the professionals submit it. So i i is not accurate to say he got an unfair advantage on any level. The reason that the the township engineer and the public works um put in some of the infrastructure was to to make him more responsive to the residents' needs. But the RFP and the mileage, which again, that amount over the years was fairly de minimis, was not something where he got an unfair advantage. It was an administrative error, as the Council President correctly stated. And the minute we were informed of it, it was reversed and and did not occur. So no other
Well, it wasn't the minute we were informed of it. But, Mr. Trank, if we're going to pay mileage um to a forester, I think all of the respondents should know that. If we're going to cover their mileage, they should know that when they make their response.
No, they, we we didn't have any intention to pay it. He put it in his his proposal, and it was paid. It wasn't that other people were told they could not put it in. It said he put it in.
But it wasn't, okay.
It's not, we don't advertise, like you don't advertise for a a a law firm to say whether we're going to pay you to do transportation to court. When I, when if if a particular respondent wants to make that and say, okay, we charge for mileage, then that's an expense, and the council wanted to approve that contract, has it in the contract. So
So, Mr. Trank, if if an an attorney responds to a a an RFP, and in that response, there is no mention of paying mileage for transportation to and from court, and then once they are awarded that contract, they say, well, now you have to pay me mileage for going to and from court, I would assume we would tell them, no.
Right, and that was our mistake, exactly as the Council President said. We made it administrative error.
Right, which thing gives you, but it, which thing gives you um, which thing gives you a benefit if you were the one who's getting the mileage that none of the other respondents would have even been aware of. I baited, but that's just a fact.
Okay.
It wasn't his proposal, and I and I what do want to say, what, once it was brought to to, and I it was brought to my attention, uh, we did immediately, not only did we stop paying it moving forward, we went back within that contract year and and took a credit for that. So we did respond to it immediately once it was brought to our attention.
Thank you, uh, Mr. Gross. I'm going to call on um Councilwoman Castellino. Your hand has been up for a while, and then Councilwoman Williams. Oh, you just put it down. Okay. Councilwoman Castellino. You're you muted, Councilwoman.
Sorry, I'm having trouble tonight. Um, no, I I just want to make the point, I understand where Councilman Rutherford's going. Um, and I I I do appreciate his frustration because I, you know, I was frustrated on those points as well. Um, but Mr. But as to Mr. Trank's point, there aren't many foresters lining up. Um, I know Mr. Laporte, I I know there are some companies out there, larger companies that out there provide the services, and maybe he could just talk to that point a little bit how pricey they have been, because he has made phone calls in the past and to do price comparisons, and it is like over $100 or way over $100 an hour to get a consultant from a larger company as opposed to these individuals. So I'm not sure if Mr. Laporte is still there, if he wants to talk to that.
Um, yes, you're you're correct, Councilwoman Castellino. Uh, we do have a consultant who is capable of providing uh the services, but they were approximately $140 an hour.
Yeah. Thank you. I just wanted to share share that information that I had investigated myself, Council Councilman. Thank you, Council President.
Council President, I'd like to make a motion to approve Resolution 187 dash 21.
Second.
Hold on, you caught me off guard there.
I get tired.
Yeah. Okay, um, Councilwoman Castellino?
Yes.
Councilwoman McCartney?
Yes.
Councilman Rutherford?
No.
Councilwoman Williams?
Yes.
Council President Matute Brown?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, uh, ordinances on second and final reading.
Before we go into the ordinance, because are we gonna, we have, I'm so sorry, Madam Clerk, I hate to interrupt you.
That's okay.
Um, we do have an executive session um scheduled, right?
So, Council President, in light of the the mayor's overview, um, does the council still see a need for the executive session tonight? It's up to you.
I I will defer to my council colleagues. I'm seeing.
I'm good.
Okay, Councilwoman Williams? Councilman Rutherford?
Yep.
Okay, so um, there is a need, since the mayor did uh join us this evening.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, ordinances on second and final reading, 2645 dash 21, bond ordinance providing for renovations to the West Orange Public Library um appropriating $6,506,217 therefor and authorizing the issuance of $3,408,000 bonds or notes of the township to finance the cost thereof. Is there a motion to introduce on second and final reading?
So move.
Second. I don't know who did the second. I'm sorry.
Councilwoman Williams.
Okay, thank you. Councilwoman Castellino?
Yes.
Councilwoman McCartney?
Yes.
Councilman Rutherford?
Yes.
Councilwoman Williams?
Yes.
Council President Matute Brown?
Yes.
Public.
Yeah, the public hearing.
If there is anyone in the public who would comment on this resolution, please raise your hand.
I am not seeing any hands raised, uh, Council President.
Thank you.
And just to add, uh, Council President, the President of the Library Board did say that um all the plans for new library are already on the library website, but she will immediately make them available so they could be on the Township Council website, because as you correctly stated, they're pretty well-developed and pretty exciting.
All right, thank you. Thank you. Uh, Councilwoman Castellino, your hand is up.
Yeah, I I just want to thank the Library Board, the French Group, all the all them for their support. Um, this is very exciting, moving our township forward, and they have worked so hard, came up with such a great thoughtful plan for the community. This has always been a a great project, and I am just thrilled that um we are able to move forward with this project for our community. So thank you to all who have worked towards this goal. And, Mr. Trank, in the legal department, you've done an outstanding job. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman Castellino. I'm sure we all share in that sentiment. Madam Clerk?
Is there a motion to approve 2645 dash 21 on second and final reading?
So move.
Second.
Second.
Councilwoman Castellino?
Yes.
Councilwoman McCartney?
Yes.
Councilman Rutherford?
Yes.
Councilwoman Williams?
Yes.
Council President Matute Brown?
Yes.
Okay.
Is there anyone in the public that would like? Is there anyone in the public that would like to speak on this ordinance? Please raise your hands.
Well, that was the final adoption of that one.
Final adoption of that one.
All right.
It's getting late.
Yeah.
It is getting late.
Of 2646 dash 21, an ordinance amending and supplementing Chapter 7, Traffic Subsection 7 dash 32.2, Restricted Parking Zones of the Revised General Ordinances of West Orange, Handicapped Parking Stalls at 172 High Street and 41 Liberty Street. Is there a motion to introduce on second and final reading?
Second. Okay.
Councilwoman Castellino?
Yes.
Councilwoman McCartney?
Yes.
Councilman Rutherford?
Yes.
Councilwoman Williams?
Yes.
Council President Matu Brown?
Yes. Uh, is there anyone in the public that would like to speak to this ordinance? Please raise your hands.
There are no hands up.
Thank you. Madam Clerk?
Any council members have any comments? No, okay. Is there a motion to approve 2646 dash 21 on second and final reading?
Some move. Second. Second.
Councilwoman Castellino?
Yes.
Councilwoman McCartney?
Yes.
Councilman Rutherford?
Yes.
Councilwoman Williams?
Yes.
Council President Matu Brown?
Yes.
Okay. 2647 dash 21, an ordinance amending Chapter 4, Sections 5.1 and 5.2, Chapter 5, Section 34, Chapter 22, Section 3, and Chapter 25, Sections 4, 24.2 and Part A, permitted uses table of district regulations of the Revised General Ordinances of West Orange, Licensed Cannabis Entities. Is there a motion to introduce on second and final reading?
Some moves.
Say again.
Okay, Councilwoman Castellino?
Yes.
Councilwoman McCartney?
Yes.
Councilman Rutherford?
Yes.
Councilwoman Williams?
Yes.
Council President Matu Brown?
Yes. Is there anyone in the public that would like to speak to this resolution? Please raise your hands.
There are no hands.
Thank you. Do any of my council colleagues want further discussion? Councilwoman Castellino, I see you.
Yeah, so as I was stating earlier this evening, I, I've been struggling with this one uh for multiple reasons, which I'm not going to take everyone's time. I, I start a little bit earlier. I just want Mr. Trank, um, I don't think Mr. Moon's with us this evening, just, uh.
I can get, I can get him on. I, I told him if we needed him, I would text him.
No, no, I think Mr. Trank can answer this for us or even you, Council President. I, I just want the public to understand, especially, you know, we had a conversation just a few minutes ago about, um, you know, our constituents and, 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 you know, um, you know, we speak for the public. Well, you know, I received, uh, many phone calls of people that who were not supportive of this ordinance and for various reasons. And, um, you know, haven't connected with the superintendent yet for liaison meeting because they've had other, um, we just haven't connected, but, um, and we will, and we, and we will do so. But just for the public to understand that we have to pass something. I just want Mr. Trank just to reiterate that if this passes tonight, that there isn't anything in the wings. Um, there's plenty of time to amend this uh with multiple amendments, uh, and I just want to just give the public a timeline. Because I personally am frustrated that the state has given us this task when they haven't even given us the regulations. And it's, it's, I want to vote no for this.
Mm-hmm.
And, you know, I just want the public to understand where we're at with this. So, Mr. Trank, if you could just go over that timeline.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Mr. Trank?
Um, again, as Council President has said, August 21st is currently the date by which we have to act. There has been some legislation that I saw in the media that might extend that date. Uh, but, uh, again, I think all the work, uh, that's been done by many, including Mr. Moon, has been aimed at getting something in place so we can take advantage of, uh, this position and then immediately beginning work on, uh, revisions, uh, that, uh, are appropriate. So, I, I don't know if that fully answers your concern.
I mean, is it po, is it possible to, well, I guess it wouldn't help and we could start amending it on our own by the next meeting. Like if we were to table this to see if they push it out, but because I, truthfully, I, I have a lot of, you know, I'm, I'm very nervous with this ordinance as it reads. I, I'm not a proponent of the micro businesses, um, not because I don't want to give our residents opportunity. I just feel like there's lack of controls for us and I have a long conversation with Mr. Moon that I'm not going to get into tonight. Um, I have a concern with the distance from the schools, which I know I like to amend immediately. I have a, you know, uh, issues with it being on Main Street in, uh, by Fertissimo's where the, where the, the kids, uh, congregate, uh, after school hours on Pleasant Valley Way, um, in that shopping center. So, I, I have a lot, a lot of concerns and, um, with this, with, with the ordinance. And again, it's no fault of my colleagues. They, they've been working on this. We just haven't had the, the guidelines and we thought it was going to get postponed again, but it didn't. And, um, you know, I, I, as long as we have the time, um, I'm going back to our last ABC hearing. Um, I guess I've been around a long time as, as Councilwoman McCartney. And from time to time, we're told, well, you don't have to vote for it or, or you don't have to pass a certain, um, approve a certain license, but I've sat in those ABC hearings and, and that's not true to all the cases uh when it comes to, uh, winning in court with certain, certain circumstances. So, this is why I have such angst with this tonight. And, um, and I know it has the, the, um, the support to, to pass. So, I, I like to be a team player and, and support it, but I'm still having issues. So, I, I'll listen to my colleagues.
Councilwoman Castellino, you know, you and I have had many conversations about this. And when I did ask the mayor for his support in creating the cannabis work group in that same conversation, I said, I'd like Councilwoman Castellino's voice on, on that, um, commission or that committee, the work group. Um, because you are a different voice and I don't like to speak in a sound chamber. Um, so, the plan was, and that's why the late addition of the resolution, I wanted to, to make sure that the, um, I was able to talk to the mayor yesterday um, and go over the resolution before we put it on the agenda. It was given as a placeholder early on the week to, um, Madam Clerk, but I asked her to please hold off on it until I could speak to the mayor. Um, but so that, so the plan to your question is, and that's why we added it late today, so that we could convene this cannabis work group and we can start working on these immediately. I've been keeping a list of all the, um, suggestions and recommendations that we're receiving by email so that we know, you know, there may be some things that I don't, that I don't think about. Um, and, and your voice to me, um, because it's not always as like-minded, is very valuable to me. Um, so I look forward to working on this cannabis advisory group to make sure that all of the voices and concerns are at the table and we address them accordingly as soon as possible. Because it was Mark Moon's recommendation that we do one large amendment as soon as possible. So, the resolution we passed this evening, um, I, I'll reach out tomorrow via email after I speak to the mayor again and, um, we'll get to work right away on this because it's necessary to pass it right away. Um, with respect to any licenses being distributed, they have not been distributed. So, there isn't anything in the wings. Um, it's going to be a long process. It, it's been a long process for many years and it's not an easy process. So, um, we get to set those regulations. It's not like the ABC board where it, I, I feel your frustration and I haven't been on the ABC board as long as you have. Hear all those stories, but, um, in this case, because the state has said, said to the municipalities, this is your responsibility and has given us the, the avenue, if you will, to allow us local control, we get to say, you know, where, how, how many. And, and even if an application comes in, we're, we're the ones that are constructing that rubric to properly vet it. Which, again, which is why your voice is important because you do, um, come from a different perspective than mine. So, I, I, I know your concern, um, and I respect your concern and look forward to working on this, you know, as, as quickly as this week, um, if we can get together.
Thank you, Council President.
Thank you. Um, Councilman Rutherford?
Uh, thank you, Council President. I just wanted to go on record to say, I think, um, the history of, of marijuana laws in this country, um, reveals to us how they have been used as a weapon against, uh, the African-American community in particular, uh, poorer communities in general. And this is an opportunity to correct some of that. A lot of the information that we have with regard to marijuana has been misinformation, uh, designed to vilify and to criminalize a certain portion of our population. And I do think it's important that we begin to do the work required to heal those wounds. Um, and I think this is a good first step. One of the commenters in our public comment, I believe was, uh, I believe it was Kabira Myers. Um, I'm not looking at my notes, so if I got that wrong, I apologize. Uh, but one of the commenters, uh, spoke to the social, uh, justice aspect of it. And I am, uh, certainly looking forward to, uh, having additional conversation with you, Council President, and the rest of my colleagues um, as we continue to improve upon this ordinance. This is just the first round. Uh, we've got a, a timeline. It's been mentioned before. Uh, but we are certainly committed to doing the work over the course of time to get it right um, and to do it in a way that makes sense for West Orange. So, uh, thank you for indulging my comment.
Thank you, Councilman Rutherford. Councilwoman, uh, Williams, I see your hand up too.
Thank you, Council President. Um, so I just wanted to, again, reiterate a couple of things. I encourage all of my council colleagues to tour uh, the apothecary in Maplewood and get a better understanding of what a dispensary, um, should be. Also wanted to, um, reiterate that there are a tremendous amount of state laws and requirements um, for a dispensary to be open in any municipality. And those state laws will supersede, um, some of the regulatory impositions from any municipality. Right now, there are restrictions. No one under 21 can, can enter a dispensary. Um, so certainly dispelling the, the imagery of, of youth or people who are underage to be able to walk into a dispensary and purchase, uh, cannabis is certainly just an untruth. Um, I will also continue to use the same language. Um, if you have attended any workshops, any sessions, it's medical-use cannabis and adult-use cannabis. Um, the stigma in marijuana and weed and all those other slang terminologies um, speaks to some of the disproportionate, um, arrest records, um, some of the disproportionate incarceration, um, of those who are marginalized by color or any other, uh, means of poverty. So, one of the things that is going to be most important, um, is an education series to not just us as a council, but to our community in general. So, I strongly encourage all of us, um, to use the correct terminology when we are referring to cannabis usage, um, and, and cannabis, um, vehicles that we will permit in our municipality. Um, in addition to that, just to give you a few examples of, of some of the restrictions. Um, when you have a facility that is a dispensary in your municipality, um, it cannot have any advertisement. It cannot have any imagery of a cannabis symbol. Um, nothing of that sort is permitted use in the state of New Jersey. Even the doors to the facility as it opens, they have to be completely blocked off doors. So, that if you happen to be driving by a facility, the doors have to be situated so that you can't see inside. Um, there's security. You have to present your medical use card before you can enter. Um, there are two secure entrances. You enter your facility and then you go into the facility where the product might be visible or available. Um, so it, it is not state-regulated to be just a place like an ABC store or a convenience store where you can go in and, and purchase the product. Um, so again, it's a mind shift change, um, and, and, and I reckon this to how we unfortunately view other, um, the, the stigma of suicide. Um, you know, we, we think of suicide in a negative way because it's spoken about in a negative way. We have to educate ourselves as a community. We have to speak about this, um, product and its proper, uh, formalities. And we have to, to, to start, um, recognizing that it is a medical-use product right now. Um, there is no consumption or, or legalization to go in without a medical use card. When we get to that, again, the CRC is going to regulate that mandate, what municipalities can do, can't do. Um, of course, we do have, um, a lot of leeway in determining what we are going to do as a municipality. One of the concerns I did have with our ordinance and the way it is written is that you're applying for a usage in the township of West Orange before you've even applied to the state. Um, unfortunately, I think that's quite backwards because I, I don't think, uh, you can apply to a municipality and then get denied by the state. I think the order should be to apply for your, um, permission, permits via the state. And if the state grants you permits, then you go to the municipalities that you want to operate in. Um, I think, again, those are some things that now that we get this ordinance passed, uh, we can make those amendments. Um, but, but those are just some of the beginning steps, um, that we even as a council uh need to make sure we're, we're stating things properly. And, you know, we have a dispensary and I'm certain that a dispensary might not be the only permitted use here in West Orange. We, as a council, may agree to some of the other, um, six, um, allotted usages. But in doing so, again, there is a model right here, very close to us in West Orange. Let us take the initiative and due diligence as a council. I encourage our residents to do the same thing and understand what it is we're walking into so that we can dispel some of the myths, um, some of the misinformation, um, that is surrounded about medical, uh, cannabis usage.
Thank you, Councilwoman Williams. I, I just want to redress the point that you made with, um, the structure of the ordinance where it states that the application should be made first to the township and then to the state. It's not, it's not in fact backwards. The state does have to grant the, um, license first before they can operate. It is true. But they also need, before they make an application, a letter of support from the township. And that letter of support from the township, we decided, could not be given without proper vetting. So, they will have to make application to us first so that we can process the application and vet it properly before we issue any letter of support. So, it's written intentionally that way so that we have more control over who we're going to support an application from. Now, that doesn't mean that if we support the application, that the state is going to, uh, approve that application. We could support three or four and the state can just turn around and say, no, and not give us any. But we wanted to have a mechanism by which we were able to issue a letter of support, um, after, only after vetting that application. Um, otherwise, we couldn't support it. That's why that, that was written that way. Council, uh, Councilwoman McCartney? You're welcome.
And thank you for that clarification because that was one of the questions that was raised. I too saved the emails and reached out to the people that were sending us the emails and that was one of the points that was raised about which came first. And, um, Councilwoman Williams, thank you for all your comments because I too believe that this is really our first small step. I understand, it's my understanding that the CRC met just the, this evening while we were having this council meeting. And according to the New Jersey League of Municipalities, we may not see the regulations that we were hoping to see until late next year. So, we still have a long road to go. And I, I want to say again that I was very pleased to see the resolution added, uh, at a late minute, uh, at 188, uh, 21, creating that task force. Because though I was, and I've stated before that I was hesitant at the planning board meeting, what I did come to understand is that Council President, not only with you, uh, moving this forward with the legal department, the police chief, the health department, the zoning officer, there were many people involved in creating this ordinance. And that will hold true for every application that comes through, comes through as well. So, there will be many eyes on, on this. So, thank you. We still have a ways to go.
Absolutely. Thank you, Councilwoman McCartney. Councilwoman Castellino?
Yeah, just one last point, just from my colleagues. I appreciate all your comments. My, I, I don't have a, a stigma issue. My issue is with logistics, um, you know, uh, this still is.
You know, this still is considered cash business. That's always been some concerns of mine, how we would operate it, how we would enforce it. And just, you know, I had mentioned at the last meeting, I'd always wonder why a licensed pharmacist wouldn't be involved as to distribute the product. And you have to rely on the training. And I did do my due diligence. And last year, when some businesses had approached me as Council President, I went, listened, and educated myself. So I've been educating myself on this. And there's just many concerns. And we go back to when we're looking at the chicken ordinance and other ordinances that are dependent on our staffing resources to enforce. It's just bringing another ordinance to the table that we have to depend on our department heads. And I did call them, and they're always will step up to the plate and do what they have to do. I haven't heard of terrible problems in other towns, so I'm glad to hear that. And again, I look forward to working on the committee. And thank you, Council President, for that. So with that, as much as I have struggled because I'm not going to have the option to propose an ordinance, not to have it in the township at all, I will be a team player and be supportive with my colleagues.
Thank you, council colleagues, for a very robust discussion. I really appreciate the discussion. And I want to say lastly, only because I briefly read one of the latest emails we've received with respect to having an actual, and that was actually made, the comment was made earlier during public comment about having an actual town hall. I don't, and my council colleagues, my administration, will tell you that I don't do anything for political expedience. And certainly not for, and I will quote your email without calling your name out, for feel-good reasons. The reason the panels that I brought together at two different town halls, trying to educate the community, the people that were there were pharmacists. They were the ones who were at the League of Municipalities. They're the ones doing the trainings. They're the ones that have been doing the work. So if my intent is to educate the community, I have to bring professionals who are in the industry to do so. So having had two town halls now with professionals, this is where we are now. I have done my due diligence as an elected official. And I understand and accept that we're not always going to agree. But, you know, this is the way that we have to move forward, particularly when we're always talking about how do we generate revenue outside of increasing our taxes? Well, here's an opportunity. And we are going to make sure that we, because we also live here, are going to ensure that those parameters are going to continue to provide a safe and welcoming, inclusive West Orange. Thank you, Madam Clerk.
Okay, is there a motion to approve 2647-21 on second and final reading?
Some.
Okay, Councilwoman Castellino?
Yes.
Councilwoman McCartney?
Yes.
Councilman Rutherford?
Yes.
Councilwoman Williams?
You're muted, Councilwoman.
Yes.
Council President Matute Brown?
Yes.
Okay, 2649-21, an ordinance authorizing the construction of a system of sanitary sewage within Mellon Avenue between Cleveland Terrace and Kitchener Avenue in blocks 175.08 and 175.14 of the township as local improvements to be assessed upon the abutting land pursuant to NJSA 40:49-6 and NJSA 40:56-1 at SEC. Is there a motion to introduce on second and final reading?
Some.
Okay, Councilwoman Castellino?
Yes.
Councilwoman McCartney?
Yes.
Councilman Rutherford?
Yes.
Councilwoman Williams?
Yes.
Council President Matute Brown?
Yes.
Are there any members of the public who wish to comment on this, I'm sorry, on this ordinance?
I'm not seeing any hands.
Thank you. Madam Clerk?
Is there any discussion of the council?
No. Just thank to Mr. Lepore for all his hard work in this one, for our residents in that area.
Is there a motion to approve 2649-21 on second and final reading?
Some.
Second.
Councilwoman Castellino?
Yes.
Councilwoman McCartney?
Yes.
Councilman Rutherford?
Yes.
Councilwoman Williams?
Yes.
Council President Matute Brown?
Yes.
Okay. 2650-21, an ordinance creating a reclassification and salary schedule of certain township of West Orange employees, setting forth their titles, classification, and salary ranges, and adopting a salary guide and establishing the employee status as a township employee under the guidelines of the New Jersey Department of Personnel. Is there a motion to introduce on second and final reading?
Some.
Second.
Councilwoman Castellino?
Yes.
Councilwoman McCartney?
Yes.
Councilman Rutherford?
Yes.
Councilwoman Williams?
Yes.
Council President Matute Brown?
Yes. Are there any members of the public who would like to speak to this ordinance? Please raise your hand.
I am not seeing any hands.
Thank you. Any, oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Gross, I see your hand up.
Yes. I just wanted to remind the council, this ordinance is to put in place the items that were approved by the council for its introduced budget. You do not need to adopt this tonight. You can wait until you adopt the budget. You can adopt it if you're satisfied with the changes, the council's satisfied with the changes that it's made. It can be acted on. It's really up to you.
Thank you, Mr. Gross. Did my council colleagues have discussion, questions, comments?
I prefer to do it at budget time, but that's just me.
Is there, well, can we discuss that, though, Councilwoman Rutherford? Is there a change that you're looking to see?
No, not substantive.
I should mention that if the council makes further changes between now and budget, those changes would have to be its own ordinance anyway. So it's, but you could not change this ordinance because that would be a substantive change. So you this ordinance stands on its own. If you're satisfied with it, then you can adopt it if you want. Again, if you rather wait, that's really up to you. But you can't make, you can't make any changes in it per se. You can't tweak it. It's either an up or down vote ultimately.
Until that, unless and until that time, we make any changes to the budget, which was introduced but not yet adopted. Councilwoman McCartney, I thought I heard you.
I was just going to say that this is on second reading, and these were changes that we already approved during the budget hearing. So I see why we would have to wait.
That's why I was asking Councilman Rutherford, because this is something that we, on first reading, for the introduction of the budget.
So there was a topic, there was an issue that I discussed with you, Council President, and I did not have support on the council for, that I would like to revisit. It's not a substantive change, at least the way that I'm envisioning it now. But I don't think this is the proper time to discuss it. So that's why I said I'd rather wait. We can still vote up or down tonight.
And I defer to my council colleagues. I don't want to be the one that makes that decision. Councilman Rutherford has asked that he prefer that we wait till budget. Where is everyone?
This is not the budget. I mean, this is amendments that we, you know, things that we have already approved. We will, the budget will be introduced in August. Is that right, Mr. Gross?
We introduced it already.
Budget has been introduced with these changes.
Yes.
It's already been.
What happens in August?
And it will be, we anticipate the adoption of the budget, August 17.
Okay. So if there's further discussion, that's.
We can, let's go forward.
If there is, I think, Councilwoman McCartney, what you were going to say, I think, is that if there is further discussion during the budget time, we can address it then as well.
Yeah.
Okay. All right, council colleagues, if, okay, we'll move, we'll move forward. Madam Clerk?
Okay, is there a motion to approve 2650-21 on second and final reading?
Second.
Councilwoman Castellino?
Yes.
Councilwoman McCartney? Councilman Rutherford?
Yes.
Councilwoman Williams?
Yes.
Council President Matute Brown?
Yes.
Okay. Ordinances on first reading, 2651-21, bond ordinance providing for the acquisition of various properties pursuant to the downtown redevelopment plan by and in the town of West Orange, appropriating $13 million therefore and authorizing the issuance of $13 million bonds or notes of the township to finance the cost thereof. Is there a motion to introduce on first reading?
Some.
Second.
Councilwoman Castellino?
Yes.
Councilwoman McCartney?
Yes.
Councilman Rutherford?
Yes.
Councilwoman Williams?
Yes.
Council President Matute Brown?
Yes. And just so that the public knows, there is no discussion during ordinance that's on first reading. No public comment. But you are welcome to make public comment when this is introduced on second reading.
Okay, next item is pending matters, new matters, council discussion.
Excuse me, Council President, do we have the ABC hearings or?
We do have ABC hearings, yes. I did want to bring, thank you, Madam Clerk. I did want to bring up a discussion that we've had a couple of times now during new business and having conversations that were more of clarity with respect to the Health Director. Speaking to Councilwoman Castellino, I know your position, Councilwoman McCartney. I had had some questions that I asked our CFO, Mr. Gross, that perhaps I did not ask quite clearly because my questions were to certifications. But I wasn't clear on what certifications. I have had a discussion today with Mr. Gross, with Michael Fonzino, who is the director of the, well, New Jersey. He has the certification in the New Jersey Environmental Science. And I wrote this down so that I wouldn't get it wrong. So let me just refer to it. I just wanted to share that with my colleagues, my conversation with him today. You know, he's been, he has his certification in the environmental health. And that's a state license from, obviously, New Jersey. He is the supervisor of the animal control facility. And the history of our health department, and my longer-standing colleagues can correct me if I'm wrong, was that there was always a health director and an assistant health director, which position was not filled when they retired, but was assumed by Mr. Fonzino. My initial reluctance in supporting this request was because I looked at the position as being one of the health director needing that certification of health director. And so I thought, if we do this, as one is retiring, then we're going to hire someone. There's going to be a need to hire someone else. When, in fact, other municipalities, such as Newark, and the size of Newark, have a shared service agreement with other municipalities to share a health director. So our, Michael Fonzino, does not need the health director certification, although it is a desire of his to continue his education to do so. Understanding his responsibilities, understanding that we're going to have a retirement soon, which provides breakage in the salaries and contracts. And in layman's terms, the breakage is really a savings on that salary. If the council is considering, or if the administration recommends to the council that we do a shared service agreement for a health director, as other municipalities have, then I am okay with supporting the recommendation from the mayor. I forget how long ago it was now, but it's been quite some time that we've been mulling this over. But I do know that he runs the day-to-day things. And we potentially could stand to save some funds if we do a shared service agreement, which I'm going to ask the administration, is that the intent? And I want to say it's probably yes, because it saves benefits, it saves benefits in a full-time salary.
That would, that would always be the intent. And on that, as you know, we've had many, several different shared service agreements in the past. And that one specifically, you mentioned, health officer, has been a shared service agreement the township has had with neighboring towns. So, yes, that would, that would be the intent.
Thank you. So if we could, and I don't know the format, Mr. Gross, and I spoke to you earlier about my intent, I would like to reconsider the position for the mayor's request in this.
If a majority, if the majority of the council is in agreement, I truly, all I really need you to, is to know that. And then as I prepare for adoption, I will prepare accordingly.
Okay. Councilwoman Williams, I see your hand up.
Yeah, so, thank you. That was a recommendation that I made at the last council meeting that we revisit the mayor's recommendation. And at that time, you indicated that you would do a little bit further investigation and bring that back to the table. So I do appreciate you doing just that. And I am certainly in support of the mayor's recommendation for that salary adjustment.
Thank you, Councilwoman Williams. And it's one of the things that we find challenging as council members that we're technically not supposed to engage with our, with the municipal staff. But our administration is lenient in that regard. And the questions I needed answered should have been directed to him exactly because I gained a lot more clarity as to what was needed and what the responsibilities were. So thank you, Councilwoman Williams. Councilwoman McCartney?
Thank you.
You're welcome.
So this is what I was referring to before about, I didn't know this was going to come up on, as a council discussion. But this is what I was hoping we were going to revisit in August when we have that, the budget. So thank you for bringing it forward again. I do support this. I did do any budget hearings as well. So again, thank you for bringing it back.
Thank you, Councilwoman McCartney. Councilwoman Castellina?
Yeah, now I did my due diligence as well, and I'm good.
Thank you. Thank you, Councilwoman Williams. I see your hand. You're muted.
My hand is raised on a separate matter. So if we've completed discussion on this, I have another issue to.
Councilman Rutherford, are you?
My objection was not based on his qualifications. My objection was based on having two people serving at that level in that department when we have other departments that are depleted. So I'm still not in support.
Okay. I just want to just be clear to the residents who are still on that it's not the two, it's not the same level. One is retiring and will be saving on that, on that salary because we're not going to be filling that position. He will be assuming a different position. And we will have a shared service agreement as to the position that is retiring. So I actually think this is a savings for the township. I'm going to support that change. So, Mr. Gross? Thank you. Councilwoman Williams, your hand.
Thank you, Council President. Just wanted to bring to the council and to the public's attention an event that has happened in the high school and that has expanded to the middle schools and somewhat participatory with the municipality as a whole. But in September, at West Orange High School, we typically celebrate Green Ribbon Week. As you all may be aware, September is Mental Health Awareness Month, Suicide Prevention Month. As you all may be aware, September is Mental Health Awareness Month, Suicide Prevention Month. And the Grassroots Foundation has been very active with the West Orange High School, Liberty Middle School, in hosting an event called Green Ribbon Week. This year, that is going to be planned for the week of September 21st through the 24th. That is an opportunity to expose all of our students in our community to different mechanisms and methods to just, basically just understand that mental health and mental health and wellness is important. It promotes different relaxation techniques. As we know, September is the transition month for many of our high school students and it is very stressful. This year, they will also be returning full-time back into the schools. So wanted to bring to the attention that we would be very excited to make Green Ribbon Week a community-wide initiative this year, involve the entire municipality. Just like our students are going to be returning and somewhat apprehensive about what that looks like in our new normals, I think parents in general will also have some of those same concerns. It is a time when things that the summer comes to an end and things that are going to be done a little bit differently. So with the council's permission, if you need more information about what Green Ribbon Week looks like, I would like to encourage us as a community to make this a townwide initiative and get everyone involved in understanding the impact of mental wellness on our day-to-day lives.
Thank you, Councilwoman Williams. We'll certainly look into that. I don't know if there's a link you want to provide to email, we can just, okay. Thank you. Any of my council colleagues have any additional new business items they want to bring? Councilwoman Castellina?
So I don't want to get, thank you, Council President. I don't want to get into a full discussion because of the time. And I know we have ABC hearings left that we have to resort some brain power for. But again, I don't want to get into big conversation. But I do want to have a discussion. And I, I saw tonight, the beginning of the meeting, Councilwoman Williams, you're having another event at Rock Spring, which was a lovely event last time. But I thought we were going to put a mechanism in place of approving events with, in regards to township, townwide events. So it's, I just, I just want to, I don't think we put a process in place yet. And I don't want to discuss it tonight because of the late hour, but I think it's something we have to address.
I, thank you, Councilwoman Castellina. These are conversations that we've, we've had, I've had with the administration as well. The concern, just so that the public understands who is here, the concern is the use of, specifically Rock Spring, OSPEC has a board, so they oversee the use of that. But my, my concern has been and continues to be use of public resources for events at Rock Spring. Because when events happen at Rock Spring, they typically, if they're not directly on the patio, they are closing down access to golfers, which means shutting down revenue to the township. And that's something that I'm, I'm not supportive of doing. And in moving, moving forward, the discussion I had with the, with the mayor a couple of weeks ago was in the same vein. And he wasn't aware at the time that the, there was an October 3rd event for Councilwoman Williams. So we have to have a mechanism in place that we all abide by, administration and council members as well. There, there are plenty of other facilities that do not generate revenue, that are property-owned, that we can use. But when we, when we use our town facility, that is the Rock Spring, we are losing revenue. We are using resources as far as our DPW, they have to come out there, or our police department, if they're working overtime. So that is a discussion that we have to engage in. And I understand it was Councilwoman Castellina, the late hour and everything else. I just wanted to share that with the public because, you know, that has been raised as a concern in the public and to us.
And in fairness to Councilwoman, I mean, this is something we discussed when we approved the vendor. And we, you know, we just never, not so much us, us with, the administration never moved forward with. So I just, I just think that we need to do that so everybody's on the same page.
Absolutely, because whether, whether, whatever it is, it, you know, it just takes away from the revenue from, that we are able to generate at Rock Spring. Councilwoman McCartney?
Thank you. This is an interesting conversation or discussion to have because of the analogy, the same analogy can have been made, particularly this past year during COVID with OSPEC. There were so many residents looking for outdoor space and trying to rent them, rent outdoor space, even in our parks. And we do have mechanisms in place on when and who can rent. But Councilwoman Castellino, the same holds true years ago when permits were being put in place because we were hosting so many township events on the weekends when the schools closed. And that ends up costing the Board of Education and taxpayers money because the custodians and whatever the regulation was to have employees on site during events that the township was holding. So mechanisms were put in place there too. So I understand the need to do that.
Certainly is the need and something that we need to help reassure our residents that we are also being good stewards of their, their taxpayer dollars. That's all I have for new business. Do any of my other council colleagues have anything additional? Okay. So we are now in our ABC hearing, starting at 11:48 this evening.
Can I get a motion to enter into the ABC hearing?
Some.
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Okay. Is there a motion to end the ABC hearing and adjourn our meeting?
Some.
I'm sorry, Councilwoman Williams.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
The meeting is adjourned.
Good night, everybody. Good night, good night.
Thank you, West Orange, for joining us. For those who are still here, thank you for sticking with us. And to my council colleagues, thank you for the robust discussions this evening. And thank you to our administration and our madam clerk and our sub-moderator, Deb.
Great job, Deb.
Thank you. And when I hit end and end the meeting, no further business will occur. Enjoy the rest of your summer. Lauren will be back in August.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks, Ken.